Katerina and Chris came to me, looking for their first home.
Whether it was finding a house or a mortgage broker, Rebecca helped us through every step of the process of buying a home. We highly recommend Putnam Real Estate.
Whether you're looking for your first home, an investment property, or need to sell, our professional agents and brokers will save you time and money. We're familiar with the local building, zoning, and conservation codes, as well as the financing rules for first-time homebuyers. Our success comes from your satisfaction.
My name is Rebecca Putnam, broker-owner of Putnam Real Estate. Putnam Real Estate, here for all your real estate needs.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth Home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
To the Monday, January 11th, 2016, meeting of the Falmouth Court of Selectmen. The Board has just returned from executive session. We're now in open session. I'd invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our next hour of business are some proclamations. We have the proclamation for No Guff Week. Ms. Moran, if you would like to read the proclamation, and I think we have some people in attendance also to tell us a little bit more about it, but why don't you read our proclamation first?
Will do. Thank you. Whereas, No Guff Day has been celebrated since 2001 at Falmouth High School, when Greg Gilbert and Doug Rivasall, working with students to find a proactive way to handle conflicts, came up with the phrase "No Guff." Since Mr. Rivasall's tragic death that same year, No Guff has been celebrated in his remembrance. And whereas, by taking the pledge and making a concerted effort to observe the No Guff mantra, community members work together and support each other in keeping a positive attitude and creating a positive environment. The No Guff pledge is, "I will not speak or text anything negative about anyone for an entire day." And whereas, celebrating No Guff can raise awareness, change the environment, and help people feel better about themselves and others by discouraging negative remarks, put-downs, and bullying. And whereas, the town of Falmouth is a No Guff community, celebrations and observations are planned throughout the week. Falmouth citizens are encouraged to come up with creative ways to celebrate the No Guff concept at home, at school, at work, and during leisure time. Now therefore, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby call upon citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to the No Guff policy and proclaim January 25th to 29th, No Guff Week. And there are a couple of events I can mention that Tracy, who I believe is here, informed us of. It's going to be kicked off by a school-wide assembly at the Morse Pond School on Monday the 25th. And maybe, can Tracy expand on that a little bit, if you would?
A second, please, probably. Motion, a second, further discussion, Ms. Crago? Would you like to come to introduce yourself and give us a few more details?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. Tracy Crago, Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools. And actually, I thought it'd be better to hear it from the kids themselves. I have two seniors with me, and they can introduce themselves and tell you a little bit more about some of the things planned this week.
Fantastic.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Goulart. I'm a senior at Falmouth High School. And this year, we were thinking about No Guff, and how it's changed and evolved over time. And when I was younger, I didn't really quite grasp the idea. And we had, like, Team Color Days and teacher-student basketball games, bringing people together. But now that I'm older, I realize how important No Guff is, and I feel like it's definitely grown over time, and it's definitely become a bigger thing. This year, I've came up with the slogan, "A Wave of Kindness." Morse Pond has made a movie the past couple of years that has gotten a lot of popularity. So this year, it's going to be "A Wave of Kindness," and I thought it had a Cape Cod theme. And we're kind of trying to say kindness is like a ripple in a wave. So hopefully, people will enjoy this video, and it's going to be kind of like a pay-it-forward. And I'll just add on to that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Marcus Delby. I'm a senior at the high school. And I just wanted to talk about kind of my experience as well, like Caitlin. When I was in Lawrence, I kind of understood the meaning of No Guff Week, but I didn't really get, like, the full picture. Like she said, we had, like, the Team Color Day, which, like, brought everyone together and everything. But it was until the high school that I really understood the full meaning of it, and really enjoyed the week. I've been involved with student government since freshman year, so I have a few things that we did each year. Freshman year, we did Class Day, to kind of symbolize the appreciation of differences amongst people. Sophomore year, we had to wear numbers, which was symbolic of strength in numbers, and essentially that people work together to achieve more, in that with everyone, we can kind of do better things. And then junior year, scheduling was kind of messed up because of all the snow days, so we didn't actually get to our day as the class of 2016. But I think just experiencing this the past few years have really made me realize, like, the importance of just being kind to others, and I can kind of see it amongst the school. We set examples for the younger grades, and kind of appreciate giving back to the community through service and everything.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to take the proclamation with you for the opening evening?
And also, when our shirts, these new shirts, we're going to deliver them to you guys.
Great. Well, thank you. Oh, terrific. When is the video going to be shown?
It will debut at the Morse Pond Assembly on Monday morning, the 25th.
On the 25th?
Yep. At 9:00 AM, and then again at 10:00 AM, if you can't make the night.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just wanted to point out that the T-shirts this year, again, will be sponsored by Covosa Companies and Cape Cod Aggregates, and they'll feature a wave with some words. It's a really, really neat design, produced by Soft Is Great.
With design by Marcus?
I should have, right? But we'll be dropping those off first, for you guys to have.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? I do want to pass on the sad passing of John Mignani, who died on January 6th. John Mignani was appointed Director of the Falmouth Senior Center in 1993. He was named Citizen of the Year by the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce in 2000, and was honored as the AARP Man of the Year by the Falmouth Chapter of the American Association of Retired Persons in 1995. He was a longtime member and treasurer of the Falmouth Cable Television Board of Directors. He served on Affordable Housing Committee. He was a regular participant in preparing meals for around the table, and was active in the Massachusetts Council on Aging and Elder Services of Cape Cod. He was a charter member of the Falmouth Lions Club, and he was a town meeting member. And for several years, he participated in the annual walk for the homeless from Provincetown to Falmouth, and served as a justice of peace. If we could just take a moment to think about him, our appreciation for the many years of fine work he gave to the town. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other announcements on the Board, Mr. Patterson?
I just wanted to tag on to your comment. I mean, it's kind of coincidental that they're talking about No Guff Week, because John Mignani was just such a positive person. You always got a welcoming response whenever you interacted with him, and it just connected the two in my mind, in thinking about his kind of personality and the way he interacted with everyone.
It actually reminds me of another gentleman who passed away this week, also, was a man named Eugene Bullock Wilson, who worked at the high school, and had that same kind of appreciation for other people, and, you know, just could be seen in the halls as always being supportive and kind. And so if we could a moment to pass our thoughts about, to his family also, please. Any other announcements? All right, we have time for some public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to make a public comment on an issue that's not on our agenda this evening, we have, please, limited to two minutes, and please restrict it to not including any personal names. Next, are the minutes of the meetings, and unfortunately, in our packet, the minutes that we have to approve are just from last week's minutes, and they came in our packet today. So I know I have not had a chance to review them for approval, and so it suggests that we put those in our next meeting. Moving on to summary of actions. First is our approved request from the IRIE Restaurant Group Incorporated, 71 Water Street, for a change of DBA from Fusion Grill to 4170. Do we have anyone on behalf of the applicant here tonight? I actually had a question for them.
Just a change of name, is it not?
It is. And actually, I guess it's a little bit of a specific question, that last time that this business changed ownership from the current owner, and she had a partner, she bought her partner out, they did not honor the gift certificates when they changed ownership. And I guess my question was, I wanted to make sure that they were going to honor any gift certificates, because it is just a change of name, same owner, and I hope that they are going to. And I guess before I approve this, I would love to, or maybe approve it with the contingency that we do get some response, that they are planning on honoring any Fusion Grill certificates in the future.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the change of name from the Fusion Restaurant to Ivory Restaurant Group, 71 Water Street, Woods Hole.
They're actually going to be doing business as, the actual name of their business is going to be 4170.
Right. 41-70. Right. And we request that they inform us if they are going to continue the practice of honoring, of providing gift certificates. Is that right?
Honoring gift certificates, yes. Right.
You're talking about outstanding gift certificates, I believe.
Right.
They've already been issued.
Honoring outstanding gifts.
Yes.
Right. I will amend my motion to report in that fashion.
Here we have a motion. Second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Our next item is a taxi license, transfer of a vehicle for hire license from All Seasons Taxi.
Yes, sir.
Yeah?
I'm the current owner of All Seasons Taxi.
Just for the mic.
We're going to bring the mic to you.
Oh, the TV audience.
So if you introduce yourself, please.
My name is Bennett Tribkin, 115 Scranton Avenue in Falmouth. I've been a Falmouth resident since 1978, and a co-founder of the Falmouth Offshore Grand Prix, which we have raised over $100,000, which we've donated to Falmouth Hospital and various charities in Falmouth. I'm a lawyer. I don't practice anymore. I own a taxi cab company, but as you can see, I can't drive anymore. I don't know whether, my neurosurgeon at the VA, a veteran also, said that he hopes I will be able to drive someday in my life, but the surgery was six months ago, but it can take up to two years for the nerve damage to repair. And so, that being the case, I've had two people, one of which is here, Beth Ann Levitt, the other is a gentleman, that have been keeping the business alive, serving the town of Falmouth, as well as the Council on Aging on Martha's Vineyard. And I request to transfer my license to Charles Burridge, which is right here behind me. And if you have any questions for me or him, please feel free. He's been a taxi driver for Falmouth Taxi for nine years, so, and he lives in East Falmouth, and he knows the town, and I would like that to happen for my benefit and his benefit.
First question I have, just to clarify, that your previous license was one annual license and one seasonal.
Yeah.
And what we have in front of us is just the one annual.
Oh, when it was renewed, the Selectmen's Office said it would be renewed as both the annual and seasonal license.
Unfortunately, the application that we have from Mr. Burridge lists the number of vehicles as one.
Well, currently, it's one. He would like to be able to put another vehicle on as a seasonal license, and Diane said my renewal license had the seasonal and the annual on the same license. I never put a seasonal license on.
Oh, excuse me, it does. There is a page, two vehicles, one annual, one seasonal.
That was, that is, last December 15th.
No, it actually says, valid until December 31st, 2016. But that's your current license.
Which should have the seasonal on that renewal.
It does. But the transfer, does Mr. Burridge already have a license, and this is addition?
No. I'm transferring my license to him.
Well, I would certainly entertain a motion that we approve that, but make sure the documentation is actually, I have no problem with doing what's being asked, but I just want to make sure the license actually says what you want it to, because right now, it doesn't.
Well, I will contact Diane tomorrow at the Selectmen's Office to clarify that.
Mr. Patterson?
Isn't that something we can take care of?
Yeah.
I think we can handle that administratively, so.
Okay.
We're just going to correct our paperwork to reflect your request.
Okay. Thank you very much. It'll save time and trouble.
Ms. Moffett?
How long have you been in business here in Falmouth?
I used to drive for Falmouth Taxi, but a license came up eight years ago. So this would be my ninth year.
With All Seasons Taxi?
Yes.
And is that printed on your cars?
Yes.
Okay. I was just thinking about that, and I do use a cab different times.
Well, please, please use Mr. Burridge, because he's taking over the whole game.
Right. I'm saying.
He's getting the name, the phone number, the whole shtick.
And it's how many taxis?
It's one right now, but his intention is to, I was thinking about doing it myself, but his intention is, he has more contacts than I have, as far as drivers concerned, and his intention is to put the seasonal license in effect in May.
And both cars restored to 50 D. V. Avenue?
Yes.
Any other questions from the Board?
So I would move to grant All Seasons Taxi, a taxi license for two vehicles, one annual and one seasonal.
Thank you.
For the current fiscal year, ending December 31st, 2016.
And under the name of Charles Burridge.
In the name of, yes, Charles Burridge, doing business as All Seasons Taxi.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, and we'll take care of making sure the right documentation.
Thank you very much. Selectmen.
All right, next is the application for a change of manager. This is 77 Water Street, doing business with Captain Kidd Restaurant. Do we have any on behalf of the applicant? My understanding is this is a change of manager going to one of the owners, who's going to take over the position of manager in place of Mr. Shawn Woods.
James Crowley.
Mine's been approved by the other two owners, as being the new manager.
Okay. I know the police department has no problem with it.
Run it, Corey.
Anyone who'd like to speak on this?
I'll make a motion to approve a change of manager for 77 Water Street, Inc., doing business as the Captain Kidd, the new manager being James O. Crowley.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. The next is an application for a Sunday entertainment license. And before we get started, this is Coffee Obsession. I do want, I talked to both Caroline and Diane, who confirmed that anyone who came in for an application for entertainment license, if they had checked off on the form they wanted Sunday, they were told that they had to fill out another form to specifically request it. And if they chose not to, then we understood they were not interested in Sunday entertainment licenses, and if they did want it, they had to come back with that application. So they've all been informed. When things start going, we can actually make sure that they are standing by that Sunday entertainment policy. They've all been told. And they'll be doing the same thing when the seasonal licenses start coming in, which will be in this next month.
Okay.
So the application for one, the Sunday Entertainment for Coffee Obsession, 110 Palmer Avenue, specifically dates of January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, February 21st, March 6th, and March 20th. Move, approve?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is an application for special one-day liquor licenses. I was just trying to remember what the regulations are as to how many you can, one-day liquor licenses can you have? Is it limited to?
20, is it? I think it's 20 or 26, I forgot.
I just remember when the Seacoast shores came in, that they used to, you know, I thought we're getting pretty close to the limit here, but, and I just want to make sure that, 16? So the dates for the one-day liquor licenses are January 29th, January 30th, January 31st, February 5th, February 6th, February 7th, February 13th, April 6th, April 7th, April 8th, April 13th, April 15th, sorry, those are May. May 6th, May 7th, May 8th, May 13th, May 14th, May 15th, May 20th, May 21st, and May 22nd in 2016. And I guess the one thing we'll have to look into is the maximum number, and if they come for some in the second half of the year, that we're not going over that number. At least be aware of it if we are. Move, approve?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is for a special one-day liquor license, West Falmouth Library. This is for Saturday, January 16th, 2016, for a fundraising concert from 7 to 9. Move, approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
A second, Ms. Moran. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is authorize the town to seek D L T A funding. That's District Local Technical Assistance Funding. Well, the Performance Management Program. This is a program that we heard about during the summer, during our retreat. But, Mr. Suso, if you could just give us a quick thumbnail sketch, or, Ms. Harper, I think you've been telling us, about the dashboards that can be created and the data we can collect.
He's asking me to speak on this, that's okay.
Yeah.
This application really is not specifically designed to instruct us on what the dashboard is going to look like. This is to develop a regional application for funding to implement this type of program region-wide. What, there are many different tools available nationally that gather information about the way municipalities perform services, and those are nationwide. Falmouth is very interested in benchmarking services based on our peers, but there's not a lot of data out there for our local peers. So we approached the Cape Cod Commission in Barnstable County. They've actually performed a bid process to engage these types of services for the region, Falmouth being one of those entities, and have suggested that we seek funding to help offset those costs. So we don't know exactly what services we intend to measure yet. We'll work on that collaboratively as a region, but it will allow Falmouth's dollars to go a little bit further in that process.
I just like the idea of finding out what other towns do and being able to make some comparisons. And again, as you're saying, we're not sure which services we're going to be talking about. At least we can get some idea for some of them.
And as you noted, Mr. Chairman, it was the item that was discussed generally as one of the items at the retreat this past summer, in terms of performance management. So we are certainly very interested in that type of benchmarking and allowing us to continue to set the bar higher and evaluate our performance compared with some of our peers.
There are two things I really like about this. First of all, using the Cape Cod Commission, I see in the letter to Patty Daly, the services for the region is essentially going to be split between 15 potential participating towns, and otherwise, it would be at a cost of $120,000. So I like the fact that we're making our dollars stretch, and, you know, and sharing the cost with the region. And secondarily, I think that it's another opportunity to really up our customer service and lower our costs at the same time, so we're not reinventing the wheel. We're really learning about how other communities make, you know, spend money and make efforts to perform the same services, and hopefully, to the benefit of all the taxpayers. So I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Moffett?
When I'm reading this, that it's a cost of about $120,000 per year for 15 potential participating towns, is the 120 for the whole group?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that lasts for the one year? Is that, as it's saying, it's each year?
Yeah.
So we would be?
Ideally, about $10,000.
About $10,000, thereabouts. Okay.
I like the fact that you've tied in participation in the Massachusetts Community Compact Initiative also, been advocating for us to find an opportunity, pick one of those many opportunities, to really reflect on our activities at town, and see whether we can't use the best practices that are being offered to us, and compare that, and come up with another way of running Falmouth. So it's an offer that's there, that's been prolegated by our new governor's administration, and I think we should try to take advantage of it. I think we can do nothing but learn from the process, even if it takes a little extra time to participate.
Does that mean that some of the Community Compact funds might be available to the region for this?
It's something that we're discussing, whether this might be a good regional Community Compact application.
Further discussion?
Can offer a couple of minor edits to the letter, that probably you can consider. Some things I picked up that were, like, by post.
Okay, well, we're not approving the letter as much as we're.
Happy to do so.
No, I know.
Authorizing the town to seek the funding.
Yes.
I'd make the motion that the town manager seek the funding.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if I just might comment, I want to thank Heather for carrying this ball forward with Cape Cod Commission and others of our colleagues, as a follow-up to our discussion with the retreat this summer. If we are successful, that will help ensure that we have more benchmarked communities to work with, although we recognize that, given the size and complexity of Falmouth, we're not the perfect equivalent for many of the communities on the Cape nonetheless. The more that we have involved, there are some commonalities there, and we welcome that. So I appreciate that initiative on Heather's part, and that's what's brought us to this point.
One other comment. I know.
I know most of us probably heard the community compact presentation by Lieutenant Governor Polita, and I know based on the, the one that I, I attended, this is the kind of thing that she would really like. I mean, it fits very much into her own thinking in terms of how we provide education and training to public employees in the state. So I would think that this should be well received at the, at the State House.
Very good. Our next item is to authorize access agreements for the Permal reactive barriers, and these I think are in two different basic geographic areas. Are we, I was just a little confused as to whether we are trying to get them both approved tonight, and one's the selfish drive Tarponet Road access area, and the other's the Shorewood Drive access.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask, in the interest of completeness, if the board would be, would be willing to authorize in both areas? It's the same concept we'd be applying, and from a standpoint of allowing the Water Quality Management Committee and involved staff members to move forward, I would so recommend if you would be so inclined.
Any other questions, Ms.?
Just perhaps a comment to say that, you know, this is, again, an example of Falmouth stepping up and actually experimenting with trying to mitigate the nitrogen fertilization of our actuaries. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to contribute to this, this research that could very well benefit not just Falmouth, but many other municipalities across the country.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the access agreements for selfish drive Tarpon Road and also Shorewood Drive.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving on to administrative orders. Next item is to approve request for the abatement for road betterment for sixty-three Regis Road.
No one here to present that.
Okay. And we do have a contingency on that to make sure that we actually can get the statement about the unbuildable lot, and that we have a covenant that we have asked them to agree to. Is that right?
Yeah. Ken, you want to comment?
Yeah, the only comment is, I would recommend that the board endorse this as recommended by the Director of Assessing to include a determination if the parcel does become buildable at any future time, that then entry fee be imposed equal to the betterment. And that's in the recommendation by the Director of Assessing.
I read this like three times, and I really can't quite figure out, I got to understand why an abatement, but if somebody could explain it to me a little bit better, other than attempting to read this, they've combined the lots, there were two lots, and I'm assuming that there was an abatement on each lot? No, I don't know. And then which abatement is being, which abatement is being abated?
Sixty-three Regis Road.
Yes. But now it's all one lot, is it not? Because it was two, it was sixty-three and...
Right, fifty-seven Regis Road, there, I don't think there was an abatement on. I think that they, that shows that they...
Two seventy-eight.
The fifty-seven Regis Road had an amount of assessment of the seventy-five, seventy-seven hundred twenty-three dollars, which they said they were going to portion over twenty years. And that one, with documentation that that is not being abated. But the one that is being abated is the unbuildable lot that has been joined to this lot. And I think what the covenant is, is if at any time they try to separate again, or it becomes buildable for what other reasons can happen, that then they will have to pay the betterment on it at that time.
Okay, so the one lot that is unbuildable receives the abatement, and then the lots are combined into one.
Right.
Is that how it goes?
That's our understanding.
And the condition will be placed upon the deed and recorded, so that it becomes buildable?
Yes, the property will have a recorded covenant placed on it.
In that case, I will move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. All right. The next is to accept a donation from the Daniels, from Daniel Spalding, on behalf of the Lois S. Harmson Memorial Fund, in the amount of a thousand dollars to the Falmouth Public Library Children's Department. And to vote to accept donation for Mark Harmson, Harmson, on behalf of the Lois S. Harmson Memorial Fund, in the amount of five hundred dollars to Falmouth Public Library Children's Department. Ms. Harmson was a librarian, a children's librarian in California, but her dedication to this town and to our children's library is being remembered by her family.
I move that we accept this donation with appreciation.
Second.
A motion, second, to accept these donations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we're accepting both donations, the thousand and the five hundred.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next donation, Ms. Kennedy, do you know if we're still hoping to have that family here tonight?
I don't see them here, but I would like to speak on their behalf.
Okay, would you rather have us hold it for a little bit to see if they are going to be here?
No, they said they weren't here at seven.
Okay. Well, why don't you speak on their behalf, and this is to accept donation from the Greater Horizons Dryer Family Foundation Fund, the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to...
No, I'm the next one.
I'm sorry.
I'm the next one.
Yep.
A thousand dollars.
All right, well, we'll talk, we'll do the one I just read and then come back to you, because they'll give us two more minutes. We also have donation from the Greater Horizons Dryer Family Foundation Fund, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to Falmouth Public Library Children's Department.
Move to accept. Second.
A motion second to accept that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And now we have a donation from the family of Todd Regan, in the amount of a thousand dollars to Falmouth Recreation Department, account for youth baseball program. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. A family representative from the Regan family was going to be here, but I don't know what happened. Anne Marie was going to be here, but I would just like to comment that they called me, and they wanted to make a donation to our youth baseball program, the little, little ones, because Todd had passed away and he loved baseball. So I welcome the donation, and I just wanted to say that we're going to use that for our Pony League program to, to get the kids some really, really slick-looking uniforms. No moment. So it would be something that we wouldn't be able to afford to buy, so we're going to use that to his memory. And we are very appreciative for the donation. Thank you.
Thanks, Helen.
I move approval, or move that we accept the donation with gratitude.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And the last administrative order is to approve the certification of estimated summer resident population as of July tenth. I assume that's July tenth, two thousand and fifteen?
I think it's a projected.
Yes.
Or it's a projected one?
Yeah.
Yep. There will be.
Projected.
Okay. So of July tenth, two thousand and sixteen, of eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-two?
So it's, it's not very clear, because when I first read it, I thought those were the summer residents. But does that mean that that's in addition to the year-round residents, or is that's the total population in the summer?
That's the total population in the summer.
It seems like it's a total, except for Fourth of July weekend.
Well, this is July tenth, not July fourth. No, I didn't hear it. Okay. But we do have the formal vote to approve the certification of that population is given to us by our...
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. And we're moving on to our business. First item of our business is the adoption of our fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget. We had our budget meeting on Tuesday, certainly well-attended by our department heads and well-presented, and I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it in further detail. Were there any questions, comments that people want to make before we consider a motion to approve it? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I have one that came to mind over the week. I was actually reading the beacon that we get from our messages, an association, a organization. I see that the open records, or, yeah, public records law passed through the House has been revised significantly and is now in the Senate's hands. And I know that MMA has been tracking this to some extent. And I guess the question I have is, have we anticipated any additional labor requirements to meet those new requirements in this next fiscal year? Which I guess would be the town clerk's responsibility.
Well, it's a, it's a great question, Mr. Chairman, Selectman Patterson. The, the way this seems to be unfolding is that a considerable amount of the burden will be on the individual departments where the records are located. Certainly, the town clerk's office would be one of those as well. But because of the vagaries of the legislative process, we've been reluctant to make any broad, draw any broad conclusions regarding exactly how this will play itself out. And our preference would be to continue to monitor it, see what is actually adopted and settled in both houses, and come to the Springtown meeting, if necessary, with some adjustments, if we feel those would be in order in terms of personnel, to provide the kind of services that you're talking about. But I do want to affirm that we stand ready to fully cooperate on public records, and we've been doing that in the past, and are fully committed to continuing to do that, and hope that it doesn't take a form that would require additional manpower, particularly for peak periods. But we'll stand ready to do what's necessary.
I guess in that regard, let me just follow up and talk about, I know we're looking at moving our, our archives, and I think one of the recommendations that people have made to try to mitigate the additional overhead associated with any changes that occur is to actually digitize these so that you could find them using computer-aided techniques rather than having to search through files. Are we moving in that direction as part of moving the archives and sort of putting them into digital form in the process?
The, the answer is yes, but it is over, it is a process over time. Heather, I don't know if you want to comment?
Yeah, I can make a couple of comments. The project that you're speaking of is, is not in, in large share a digitizing project. It's simply a new file storage system, reducing redundant files, creating a system where they are easily retrievable, upon which they will be digitized and distributed to the requester in digital format. So as they're requested, they do become a digital document. However, that, what you're suggesting, that all town documents become digital, is a very large project and has a lot more zeros associated with it than, than what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget? Ms. Pecito, do you want to say anything on the budget? More than you have already?
Well, since you've given me the form, I just wanted to thank everybody for the support that we received putting the budget together in last week's meeting. It's just, it's very, it's very nice to get all the support with such a lengthy process and the understanding, so thank you.
Mr. Law, are you ready to get it?
I got another week to go.
Indeed, I think so. Any other questions or suggestions or thoughts before we vote?
Well, I just want to make a comment that I think everybody really understands that everyone doesn't get all they want in a budget. But I think when you can prepare a budget, as the, as the town manager and the staff and Jennifer have done with all the departments, is that they, they recognize and accept that pretty much. And, I mean, it's the same every year. I mean, there's never a windfall, unfortunately, but we move forward in the best way we can and fund the things that are important to fund in that year. Sometimes you, well, more often than not, you can't, you never can fund everything, but eventually it comes around that, that things do get done. So, so I think it was done in a very fair and way, and it was obvious from the department heads who were there that they, that they were very comfortable in the sense that that's what they got, and now we move forward. So I would make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal seventeen as presented.
And I will also comment before we get to second and the vote, is the feeling that there's been a greater deal of communication between the departments and the Finance Director, and specifically between the School Department and the Finance Director, about what's possibly available, what might even be available a little bit more in the coming months, I think has alleviated a lot of the stress and concern that we've felt in the past two or three years when we get to this budget and we hear murmurings that certain departments aren't getting what they need. But I think there's just been much more communication, open communication and transparency about it, that people say, okay, we understand how it's working.
And just to piggyback on that, that all the suggestions at town meeting have really come to fruition, and that the Finance Director has been able to make the format of the budget more understandable, separate capital items, all of the, you know, over time, I think it, we're, we're in much better shape for a very clear informational document.
So we had a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We are adopting the budget, and we will send it off to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
By transmission by the end of this week, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much to you and members of the board. Thank you, Jennifer. Nick? See you soon.
Thank you.
Our next item is this discussion of a liquor license violation policy. You have a draft that's been prepared for you by Mr. Duffy. Mr. Duffy, would you like to introduce your draft? Any major points on it?
Good evening. Frank Duffy, Town Council. A couple of weeks ago, I submitted to you, through Mr. Suso, a draft liquor license violation policy. The town of Falmouth does not have one at the present time. The genesis of this policy came about because the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission has recommended to the cities and towns that they each individually adopt a policy as to how they will handle liquor license violations. And there, thereupon, the Massachusetts City Solicitors and Town Councils Association, which is an organization that I'm active in, took it upon themselves to prepare a draft policy for consideration by the licensing boards in the particular town. So it is in that context that I submit to you this report, this not report, the violation policy. This is a draft policy to really begin a discussion of how you would like to handle violations of the liquor laws. You remember back in August, I think you had about six or so violations. There was a sting that was prepared and operated by the Police Department back last summer, and they cited seven licensees for selling alcohol to minors. And I do remember that night, there was some, a lot of discussion on the board as to how you would meet out punishment, what the various punishments were, there were various degrees of culpability. So this is a, an opportunity for the board to think about how you might want to handle them in the future. This policy does not supersede any criminal penalties that will be brought by the Police Department if they feel criminal penalties are appropriate. Also, the, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission has stated that one of their policies is that they would like to see communities have a policy which is, which assures fair enforcement of the alcoholic beverage laws, and also will avoid arbitrary decisions and arbitrary punishments for the same violations. So I'll just go through some of the highlights here. On the first offense, there's a minimum penalty of a written warning, and there is a maximum penalty of up to six-day suspension of the liquor license, with the caveat, of course, which follows through the entire document, that you are to look at the circumstances of each violation to determine aggravating circumstances or mitigating circumstances, and also various issues of culpability. Now, in my memory, there have been a number of violations that have come before the board. I know this past summer, you had a situation where I think seven licensees were cited for selling to minors. But the summer before that, you had other hearings where there was overcrowding. I think, remember, there were several establishments where, one of them, I believe, had double or more the license capacity of the premises. Then there have been others in my memory where licensees continued to serve after closing hours. So if their license is up at, at one o'clock, and they're found still serving a quarter after one or one-thirty, that's a violation. As to, as to how you want to weigh these, it's up to you. You're the deterrent, you make the decision as to what is the more serious violation and what is the appropriate penalty. But that is why there's no set penalty for the first violation. It's a minimum and a maximum, because you have to determine the seriousness of the violation.
When we describe them as first offense, second offense, and third offense, is that of that same variety?
No, I, my understanding that that is no. So, and if you have a licensee that's in here for selling to a minor one year, and the next year they come back because they're overcrowded or they're selling late, that's the second violation.
What if all three happen in one night? I mean, just...
You've got three violations.
Okay, so would be considered three offenses, even those?
Yes, you do. Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
That'd be quite a trifecta if you've got... That'd be quite a trifecta if you've got three violations all night. So because there's a minimum and a maximum, you have a right to impose any sanction in between, but you wouldn't go below the minimum or exceed the maximum. The second offense, there would be a minimum sanction of three-day suspension, maximum of six. For the third offense, it'd be a minimum of six-day suspension, maximum of 12. And the fourth and subsequent offenses, it's kind of hard to believe, there'd be subsequent offenses after a fourth, but 14-day suspension and revocation of license would be the maximum. And then the policy provides some factors that you're to consider in determining the imposition of penalties against licensees as to whether they're aggravating or mitigating factors. This would be, for example, action taken voluntarily by the licensee to prevent future violations. One of the actions suggested is the purchase and installation of an age verification machine, which I'm not particularly personally familiar with, but apparently there is some machine that will, you can swipe a driver's license through it, and then it will light up a green or a red light and tell you you can serve this person. You also have a right to take into consideration the past history in license to compliance checks, and it's, also would be my belief that it's not necessarily limited to liquor license violations, but perhaps to other violations relating to the operation of the premises. For example, if you have fire code violations or something, you might take that into consideration at the same time. Another issue is the deliberation of the violation, how deliberate was it? Was it accidental? Was it inadvertent, or was it deliberate? How unique was the violation? If you have special circumstances, it probably will not be repeated in the future. You might want to take that into consideration as opposed to a situation where it's an event that happens all the time, and there's really certainly less excuse for allowing it to happen. How involved is the management in the violation? Did this take place when there was no management present? Why was no management present? Or, at the other end of the spectrum, was management directly involved? Was it the manager who served the minor, or the manager who was pouring the drinks at 1:15 in the evening? And also, the licensees failed to comply with any server training requirements. I know that the board has typically required tips training as part of any violation and the remedy, and has that been complied with. Couple of other additional requirements for consideration. The draft policy, which I've given you, says only offenses that have occurred within the last four years preceding the date of the violation shall be used in calculating the offense. Four years is not necessarily cast in stone. If you wanted three or five, I'm sure that's appropriate. And it would be limited to the same ownership, so if you have an establishment that has changed ownership, they would start the slate again. But change of manager, I know you had a change of manager in here tonight, change of manager doesn't wipe the slate clean. You accumulate violations regardless of the manager, it's the ownership that counts. Another requirement is that the suspension be posted by notices conspicuously posted in the establishment that notify the public that the license has been suspended, and the reason for the suspension. Also, there's a provision in here about how notices are to be delivered. It says by certified or regular mail. I would also suggest that you might consider hand delivery, that sometimes works more Also, the provision that whenever the Police Department or other law enforcement agencies conducts one of these sting operations like they did last summer, that if anybody passes it, and hopefully they will, that that be so noted and brought to the board's attention. A couple of other things that I'd just like to point out to you, I think one of the things you might consider putting into your policy, it seems to be rather important in a seasonal community like Falmouth, that if there's a violation in the summer, the penalty be served in the summer rather than in, end of winter, six months later. Also, I noticed that you have a propensity to assign penalties for the same day of the week, so if it's a Saturday violation, the penalty is not served on a Tuesday, it's served on a subsequent Saturday. One other point I would like to raise, you may already be aware of this, but there was a question raised last August when you had the hearing on the violations that were before you at that time, that it was, some people made the reference, I think, that you had to travel to Brockner or someplace to get tips training, but I've since discovered that's available online, and no one has to go anywhere. So it's, there's really no excuse for not getting that. And then I would just solicit your comments for any other provision that you would like me to put in a, in a draft policy when it comes to be for you for final form. So I don't know, if you have any questions or comments?
This is a static one.
Mr. Duffy, on the point that the violating day should be the same as the day the punishment is executed, I'm not sure about the, you know, the decision, you know, how that decision comes about in the sense of, if it's an egregious violation and it happens on a Tuesday, I think it might make more sense to have the punishment served on a Saturday when it would have a bigger impact. So I'm not sure that would be something we would want to incorporate in the formal policy.
I think you can make a statement. Well, first of all, the day is only important if there's a one-day suspension. If the suspension's going to be two or six days or 14 days, it doesn't really matter because you're going to get all the days of the week anyways. But certainly, it could be something that you would put in as a preference of the board, but not a restrictive restriction.
Even as a preference, I'd be afraid someone would rely on that. I'm very likely going to give any infraction, you know, a Saturday punishment and not a Monday or Tuesday. So that, I would disagree with even putting that in as an advisory comment. And the second thing would be, because I like the way the policy's drawn, I think it's, it really encompasses a lot, I think it's very clearly written, and it gives the board a lot of guidance. Maybe this is also already part of your plan or the town manager's plan, but I would suggest that when a license is granted, that the policy be given right then to the licensee, and that obviously when this is, you know, if this is approved by the board, that it be distributed so that there really is, you know, good notice for, you know, all of the participants about, you know, the expectations, and I, because I think there's some good guidelines in it as well.
I think that could be very easily done. The town manager could simply distribute it at the annual renewal, which is the same time every year, and even at your direction, could probably make a special mailing subsequent to the initial adoption. It's up to you to vote.
Ms. Moffett?
When you were having discussion about the ownership, and you said that if there was a violation, and then the ownership changed, you had a clean slate. Did I understand?
The new owner comes in, and it would be a first violation, if it is a new owner.
What if it's just another family member?
Oh, I don't know that that's a new owner.
Okay.
We might want to have a definition, a clarification.
Well, this isn't, my question isn't addressed...
So a new owner does not include either family or an employee?
Something like that.
Okay, my question doesn't totally pertain to this, but it pertains to the hearing itself.
In the past, we have had, when we've had different restaurants come in with different hearings, we have had individual hearings for each one, and sometimes we've had them all in one hearing. And I don't know which is more appropriate. The, each individual hearing is a little more cumbersome because of all the things you have to read and all of that, but having them all together also causes a problem in that they all sit here in the room at the same time. So I don't know if there's any direction or any thoughts you have on that, whether, which is better or not better.
Yeah, well, you really have to have a separate hearing for each licensee, but I think what you had back in August is you summoned all six licensees here the same night, but you had individual hearings. And the chairman of the board read the police report for each hearing, offered the licensee the opportunity to stand here and explain why, what they had to say. And furthermore, it's very necessary because in the event you have an appeal to ABCC, you will have to submit the record that took place here, and the only way you can effectively do that is if you have a separate hearing.
If I may, in that case, each one was addressed individually, but the hearing never was closed and a new hearing opened? Is that what I'm saying?
No.
Which that, we did?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, okay.
It was cumbersome. We had to, we had to read each, each time, we had to say, you know, we swore a new testimony in every single time. About tedious, but we did it.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I actually think it's better to have them all together because they learn from each other's mistakes, and so I think there's a communication that goes on, so. And I like the idea that the Police Department comes, and they're all here at the same time, and we're not bringing them in off the street essentially in various hot times. We're kind of organizing this and doing it in an efficient pattern.
It did get a little easier and easier for each subsequent presenter to know what our questions were going to be and to be prepared for, but I don't think it's a huge problem with that. What about fines instead of suspensions? One of the concerns we did hear from some owners, which I thought were valid, is the suspension ended up punishing a lot of employees, and, you know, a lot of people who were innocent were, weren't there that, you know, lots of things that had a, you know, a byproduct that was unintended.
I will look into the maximum and minimum penalties that you're going to impose in the way fines and what you know.
There's sometimes where I think if the management is totally responsible for it, they say, well, I'd love to have it come out of your pocket, not, you know, the waitresses and the waiters who were not involved or weren't serving because there, I think there is a subsequent penalty to them. If the establishment is suspended and they don't open that day, and so all of a sudden, and I don't think we can say, you have to pay your employees even though you're closed that day. That would make it a bigger penalty also. The other one I had was, if it's a third offense in three years, or a third offense in a year, but we couldn't revoke it, I would be sad that we didn't have the power, that the maximum penalty, you know, I can understand after first offense, the maximum sanction would be revoking license, but if I thought, if we had three offenses in a quick succession, we would not be allowed to revoke it by this policy.
Well, that's very easy. We can simply amend the policy to say for a third offense, the maximum sanction would be a 12-day suspension or a revocation, or up to revocation. This is a draft, it's your suggestion, this is not...
I guess on a third offense, I wouldn't mind saying, under extreme circumstances, certainly, but to have us saying that we did not have that as an option, I would rather have that still be an option of it.
Maybe the right word is egregious circumstances.
Or not, not narrow it, just put that it's out there.
Right.
Yeah, you can do anything in between, so I mean, if you wanted to revert, if you wanted to come short of revocation, you could.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other suggestions from Mr. Duffy?
I don't think we're going to try to have a vote on this this evening, but I think we're clear enough that, close enough that with those changes, I think we could come back to it and vote on it fairly soon.
Okay, well, I'll submit you something in a couple of weeks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
I was just going to suggest the additions that you had thought about, I mean, it seems like they can be just added as a number eight, and worded in such a way that it's guidance.
Okay. You had mentioned another one, also making sure that the letter that we send includes information about the appeal time, so that there's no way that they can back out. So we didn't know that we only had five days to appeal. I'm not sure if that needs to be in our policy or not, but it probably is safer just to make sure that when we do send out a notification of suspension, we're reminded and include the information about the appeal time.
Yes, that's a good point. When you do, if you do suspend, the suspension has to be after the appeal period is up.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, go back to that.
Thank you, thank you.
Any comments?
Sure.
Mark Fenner in precinct six. First off, I think this is a good idea, because if you look backwards to last August, there were seven offenders of varying degrees, some first-time offenders, some, I believe, up to third. The first six were all meted out the same punishment. The woman who postponed the hearing from Hong Kong came back, and she was given a punishment that was three times what everyone else got prior to that, so it really wasn't an equitable form of justice. And you mentioned that you were considering a fine instead of a closure. I would caution you to look at that because some larger businesses could quite easily afford a larger fine, and if you were to take a smaller business and give him, give them an equal fine, whatever it may be that you consider, it may be enough to put that person out of business. And I just think that you should keep that in mind when you do deliberate these. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent point. I will say on the second one who came back, their suspension ended up being not during September, but during a much quieter time, and in their testimony, they had done nothing to prevent the violations from occurring, while the other six places had done training, had signs up, and had done a whole bunch of things, and so I completely defend our different penalty. And what I like about this policy is it does not say first offense is one day, it's between these two for us to determine depending on the circumstances, and the circumstances are different, but the six that we heard on August were, I thought, all similar enough that that's the reason why the punishment was the same for all six of those.
Right, and we also thought that the extension was contrived to not have a punishment during high season.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion of use of town property by nonprofit other groups and the fee waiver policy. Mrs. Flynn?
Well, I think this is really good. One thing I'd like to say, though, I don't see any difference between a waiver and an exemption, because they both mean the same thing. You know, they both, they, when you look at what they are, they both either relinquish the right that the town has, or they release somebody from the requirement. I mean, it's really kind of the same thing. They, you could have a permanent waiver, and you could have temporary waivers. Permanent waivers usually would be those that, that are municipal projects and school projects. I mean, those would be permanent waivers to the policy. And then the others could be, I don't know if you want to use the word temporary or occasional or whatever term you might use, but I think by using both waivers and exemptions, it's very confusing. And yet, they mean the same thing, so. Look, on the second page, you have a fee waiver and a fee exemption. They're both granted by the town manager, but they both accomplish the same, same thing, whether they waive the fees or whether they're exempt from the fees. It's, I think you, I think we need to just call it a waiver and then just decide who's going to fall under what and create the categories.
Now, what I thought the difference was on page two, the fee waivers were granted by the town manager, limited to those groups.
Yes.
Without approval of Board of Selectmen. Unfortunately, on page one, under fee waiver, it says that they need prior approval by the Board of Selectmen. So we actually contradict, I mean, so what I thought, the waivers were something that Julian could do without our approval because they fell out of category, but the exemptions had to actually come to us.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. It gets out on page two also under number three.
Right, but here, prior approval.
Under fee waiver, it talks about... Well, I thought this was a header for exemptions, prior approval. That's how I read it, and I may have misread it.
But then it once says fee waivers slash, a fee exemption slash waivers.
I think that's the heading for both categories.
Well, I, I just think it creates a problem because a fee, a waiver and exemption mean absolutely the same thing, and whether they're granted or not, maybe they should be separated by, can only be granted by the Board of Selectmen, or these are the waivers that can be granted by the town manager, or these are permanent exemptions. I mean, we have some that, they're just permanent, um, permanent waivers. I don't know. I just, I find it confusing when you use both terms because they're not, they, as I said, they mean the same thing, and they're not defined separately.
I agree. But town man, the town council, when, when the board suggests the way the policy should be changed, should also attend to the definitions and not making the word waiver and exemption crossover.
Ms. Harper, did you want to say something?
Well, no, I think that what Pat initially said is exactly right. The fee waivers are very explicit and relate to existing agencies and bodies. Most of those are municipal, and the exemptions are for, for other groups that are not defined but simply provide a unique public benefit. but simply provide a unique public benefit. And that unique public benefit is what the board of selectmen is determining. And with the way we've interpreted this, which has been in place for a few years, is that once the approval is granted by the board, in this, any subsequent year, we do not bring that back so long as the event remains unchanged. The exemption continues.
Is that the fee waiver was waived upon application, the exemption is applied for.
Correct.
That when they come, when any of these organizations say, "I want to do something, we waive the fee," they know they don't have to pay it. An exemption is something saying, "We would like you to not charge us the fee." And so the waiver is automatic. If any of these organizations actually apply for it, we don't charge them the fee.
But it doesn't even, but it doesn't really say that. I mean, when you read it, they both mean the same thing. It's just depending on who has the waiver and who has the exemption. I just.
To me, I would have flipped the two words around. You exempt an organization, that means they don't have to pay the fee. If you waive it, that's just by going on an incident-by-incident basis.
Town councils should just define that and then we can move past that.
Are there any other issues?
I looked it up in the dictionary.
Are there any other concerns about the general policy? And I'll talk to town council about coming back with it, fine-tuned, I don't think we have to discuss it, but there are other things that we want to, I mean, where this is originally came up with, has to do with the use of the town property and the, what policy are we going to have for organizations, this is like the Methodist Church, as the farmers group, as the art group, who are going to use a town property repeated times and the policy is $100 per time, you multiply that by 25 times and it becomes a fee larger than I think than we intended, do we want to have a policy for those kind of repeat users that can be added into this?
Yeah, that's okay. The other thing you could say is just a blanket statement, that municipal projects and school projects are exempt from the policy. Then you could go on into waiving exemptions for certain groups, I think, as Sam suggested. But to use it in a back-and-forth way for the same things, I think it's, the first, to read it for the first time, it can be very confusing about what a fee is and what a waiver is.
Do you think there's a benefit to the word waiver and more of a benefit to exemption, or do you look at them as equal words?
I look at them as equal.
So you can transfer them and you could use it either way. So they could be said, "It's an exemption or it's a waiver," because not one gives any more weight to any organization than, so you could have it both ways.
Yeah, I understand how to clarify. We're going to clean that up. I got that part, yeah. Ms. Ram.
So this, I think, came up when the board was struggling with, you know, the parameters of exemptions or waivers. For example, underneath this section that says exemptions, you know, it talks about parameters for deciding whether to impose fees or waive fees, such as private nonprofit agencies presenting a case for unique public benefit may seek an exemption, and it later talks about to be eligible, "The private nonprofit shall exhibit it offers a unique public benefit at no charge to the public or provides a service to the town residents, particularly the neediest of our residents." So the board was charged with deciding for the Methodist Church's services on the beach, was that a benefit particularly to the neediest of our residents? The presenter discussed the fact that it really was focused with the summer residents and tourists who weren't here year-round. So that probably doesn't come within the definition that we currently have, which is neediest of our residents. The other part of the definition is whether it offers a unique public benefit at no charge. Now, there was a collection taken, is that a charge? That's really debatable. And also, is it a unique public benefit when so many of the churches have services? So I think that, you know, one of the questions that bringing this policy to the board presents is do we, do we want to have a separate fee schedule for nonprofits or for charitable organizations? That would be one way to do it, just to, you know, whatever the normal fee is, say it's $300, to make it just a flat 100. And that way, that, you know, maybe averts getting into these very difficult nitty-gritty kinds of discussions about, you know, which, you know, what kind of, what is meant exactly by unique public benefit? So that would be one way to go, just make a category of lesser fees for nonprofits and charitable organizations and whatever other similar defined organizations town council might suggest. And then the, that would sort of be one road to take. The second road to take would be whether we try to make a very specifically defined policy, such as made when there's an example further on in the same paragraph where it says, "Affordable housing projects that are required to prepare development pro forma will not be considered unless they provide 100% affordable housing." That's an example of a very specific definition. So I think those are the two routes to go here. I'm not sure what's better at this point of this first discussion.
I have an issue with that term, "unique," also, because there are, you have, the public has a right to public spaces in a sense. I mean, we had this, Frank, you remember some time back, when we had people who were using the parking, who wanted to use the parking lot at the beach to distribute religious literature. And that was a question of, you know, the beach is for the beach, can you do that? But you get into the people's right to use public space in a certain way. So, I mean, anybody can walk down the street. We don't charge people to walk on the sidewalk. People can do pretty much, if they want to have a, stand on the sidewalk and talk to people, you can do that, you don't have to have a permit to do that. But I guess, how do we differentiate between the certain rights of people to use public space and where we can regulate it, and if we do regulate it, how we charge for it? And it seems that we've always used the criteria that if, if the use of the public space creates either cost for the town, like maybe like Pagnuna Park, when people were using it and we knew that we had to get the parks department out to repair the grass or do certain things, that's a legitimate consideration when people use public space. So I just further out there.
So one of the things unclear is that the first page is the fee waiver policy on general fees. The second page is having to do with special event fees. And so when we're reading about the unique thing and particularly the neediest of our residents, that has nothing to do with the use of the beaches for their church thing because that's the special events fees. That's for fees like getting licenses for permits in the town hall for those other kind of fees, not for events. That's for, you know, if you're getting a plumber's license, you know, a inspection, all those kinds of fees are the general fee waiver policies or, you know, all the other things that we do charge for. The special events is the one that's on page two. And I just think there are enough things that can be fairly easy to clarify that I'd rather come back with that. And if we can move on to, do we want to change anything about our use of the, so these, this has to do with the use of town property? Or do we want to include a item under the special permit fees, not a waiver and exemption, but an item there which systemizes what do we do with organizations that use, you know, property multiple times? Do we just want it to be a straight multiplier, saying, "Yep, it is $100 a day, if you're using it 25 times, it's 2,500?" Or do we want to acknowledge, repeat ones might get a reduction? And we've done that reduction for two of the organizations, for the farmers market and for the artists group. Do we want to consider that as a general policy or do, are we happy every time it comes up, we consider it on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I see what you're saying because this is really about fees more than anything else. How do we charge people for using the public spaces? And obviously, we, there are automatic waivers, it appears, for municipal and school projects, that makes sense. And then, and then the question comes on, is the, no matter who the entity is, whether it's private or, I'm not sure about public, but if the event is to raise money and it's for, it's a nonprofit and it's for a nonprofit cause, then do you waive the fee? So it would seem that that would be the decision is, is waiving, is how do you waive the fee? For what organizations can we waive the fee? Does it seem appropriate to waive the fee? And others, that it does not? And how do we do that?
Mr. Patterson?
First of all, I think "unique" is a trap word, and I don't think we should use it. I think we should find another word, because "unique" means unique, the word, you mentioned it already.
I think that's it.
But, you know, okay, so the first time it happens, fine, but three years later and it shows up, it's the same kind of event, it's not unique anymore, right?
But that's, again, that was not of the events.
I know, but when it comes to the fee issue, it seems to me we really need to look at kind of two categories for exception, one being charitable organizations that are out to raise money for charities. But I think we have to also look at groups like our churches here near the downtown that house, you know, Alcoholics Anonymous meetings on a regular basis, that house the homeless, they provide a public benefit on a regular basis. It's almost like a private, a public partnership. And I think we need to cut some slack for those kind of organizations that are consistently serving the greater good of the community, even though they have, you know, perhaps a particular religious community associated with that organization or a particular membership associated with that organization. I think we need to basically try to help out those organizations that are helping our community.
What other suggestions I have for that?
As a differentiation from just any old other non-for-profit that comes in here to hold an event like a road race.
Then maybe wherever it goes on page two, when it talks about exemptions can be delegated, again, I'm going to clean this all up, it says permit fee, one day shall not be waived. Subsequent days, this is the only thing to repeat, may be waived if the applicant can destroy, can demonstrate an equivalent direct in-kind contribution or other.
Public benefit.
Public benefit that they provide, not necessarily at that event, but can show that they are, you know, for instance, the farmers market is providing, I think, that opportunity for food to the, for our community, and they also give, anything that's not sold, they give to the service center that day of produce. And so if any of these organizations can show the public benefit that they are providing, whether it's, you know, meeting rooms for Alcoholics Anonymous or things like that, they're the ones that would be eligible to receive exemptions for repeat use of this other thing.
I like it.
So demonstrable public benefit?
Yeah.
But we also, I think, have to keep in mind the other criteria is that, is the wear and tear on the use of the land, because that's kind of really why we're charging the fee, because it takes town staff or to either prepare it or clean up that or take it down afterwards or have to maintain the grass or have to perform, whether it's parks or whether it's the board of health or whether it's the zoning board. If town services are required because of that event, that's really what the fee is for. It's not just a charge of fee. And then the question becomes, if it is a nonprofit for a very worthy cause, if they're still using the land for the same purposes, then do we just exempt them because they're nonprofit? So I think, to me, it has to do with the use of the land and whether or not the subsequent work or effort on the part of the town because of the event.
I think, the first thing that I think that is anyone who comes into the town and has a road race or they're selling products and they're, and it's for profit, I think there should be a schedule of fees for a for-profit. Because there's a couple that arrive and they come from other states and they do the road race and they take their money and they go home, and I think their fees should be different than the local organizations that have their races. But I think this is a very deep subject that we have just scratched on the top of it because as each person is going through and pulling out a word or looking at something as was, we just discussed, that this church does a little bit more and something else happens, there's a lot that has been said in the last 15, 20 minutes that shows this is not an easy discussion. And I think each one of us, if we're starting to pick apart at a word or the fee is, or how many days, or it's, I think this needs to have a lot more discussion and organized and maybe other people come in and have discussion with us.
And the other thing too is that some of the organizations that have events, they actually pay for the use of town services, like the road race. I mean, the DPW, the police, you know, they, like 4th of July, they've always paid for the police services during 4th of July. Now, they don't necessarily pay for the cleanup, but they do contribute something. So we'd have to look at that as well. Those are usually the bigger events. It is at the smaller events that actually pay the town, but some of the bigger ones do. So that's another consideration.
And just to follow up on the point that Selectman Flynn made, that could be handled by increasing the amount of the deposit and empowering the town manager to return the amount of some of the deposit if the cleanup did not impose a burden on the town.
No, they get the whole deposit back if it doesn't impose a burden.
Or, you know, however that goes, I mean, if we increased it to, in other words, the town manager would, you know, have that leeway to, you know, to either keep what additional cost was made or just give the whole thing back. If it was, the farmers market, for example, did a really good job of trying to maintain the grass and do various things, so that would be an example of an organization that really took care of the property.
I'll come back with a edited policy first to consider beyond this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a presentation of the proposed agreement with EDIC on the landfill property. Mr. Fox and Mr. Glasop, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The EDIC received seven responses to our request proposal to select a developer to build, finance, and maintain the solar project at the landfill. Of those seven respondents, two were deemed by our procurement attorney as not responsive to the minimum requirements of the RFP. Both were late summits and they were eliminated from our consideration. Of the remaining five qualified bidders, the EDIC Landfill Reuse Subcommittee and its consultants interviewed three of the most qualified teams. The results of those interviews and our financial and background investigations resulted in the Subcommittee's recommendation to the full EDIC board on December 8th, the selection of Citizens Enterprise Corporation. The recommendation was based on Citizens' experience and the best financial return to the town. Citizens was formed in 1979 by Joseph P. Kennedy II with a mission of providing heating assistance to those in need, and in 2010 formed Citizens Solar, which has developed, financed, and owns over 20 megawatts of solar energy just in Massachusetts. Citizens has developed capped landfill projects in Devers, Agawam, Chickapie, and Westfield. In addition to developing the six-megawatt system at the landfill, Citizens also proposed to construct an additional two-megawatts community solar project at no cost to the town, which when completed would provide reduced electrical costs to over 200 low-income households and families. So before I move on to Jim Fox, who is a member of the EDIC board and the Landfill Reuse Subcommittee, who will discuss with you the financial projections of the solar project, the lease between the town and the EDIC, and the power purchase agreement, just wanted to check to see if anyone has any questions for me on the selection process and why we chose Citizens.
The board have any questions on the selection process? Ms. Ram? Mr. Rand?
I, I just want to kind of add to what Mike said, in that the, the EDIC board was very moved by the possibility of Citizens Energy offering at its own cost, really, the, the opportunity for lower-income folks to, to get the benefit of the, lowering their bills through the use of solar energy. So that, that was a, a very big point, you know, that sort of carried that recommendation. And secondarily, really, the, since there is a narrow timeframe to get this all done so that the energy credits can be maximized and, and used in time, the fact that Citizens Energy is going to be able to hit the ground running and even to the extent that they're going to put the first million dollars in themselves, so that, that was another very important factor that really tipped the scales. And, and just the, you know, the track record, Joe Kennedy actually came to the meeting along with his entourage, he, he was on crutches, had had something, and, and just was really complimentary to the town in terms of looking ahead and being on the forefront, just as it has with wastewater, to be on the forefront and, and joining with the EDIC and getting this project done, which is going to have tremendous benefit over a great many years. So I, I mean, it was very impressive. In fact, I was texting the town manager during the meeting and he had, he was otherwise engaged, but I was just saying, you know, it really was a terrific presentation.
Thank you. And just so that we're sure, you know, the, the first responsibility is to get our six-megawatts completed at the landfill. The additional two-megawatts that providing is something that we still have to work on. And they need about ten acres of land in order to do that, which they're willing to lease, but that's sort of the, the second phase of, of the project. So we think that, and we put in our RFP because we knew we were going to be buying twenty thousand solar panels, has an option that if any of the developers wanted to propose, what would it cost us to buy additional solar panels, because we're buying so many of them, so that we could use them for some of the homes in the community. And it was Citizens who came up with the idea of building this solar garden and then hooking that up to two-hundred low-income families in our community.
You say we're buying solar panels, and I'm, I'm worried that that's, I don't, I hope that's not what you meant.
When we say we, actually Citizens buying twenty thousand solar panels, so that's to clarify, that's-
Okay, great.
The town, again, and Jim will explain to, to you shortly what the town's responsibility is and all this. So without that, I'll go on to Jim.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we've been working closely with Citizens, so the we word just means we're all working together as the same team. We make it clear the town's not contributing anything to this process. That was the whole thesis behind this, is we didn't want to risk any town's money at all and do it through a private partnership.
I have to think about that sentence. Aren't you using town property?
We're using the landfill, yes. We're no cash, no expenditures.
But you're using town property.
Right now, there's not really another use for it that produces any income, unless you have a better one. Glad to hear it.
That's not the answer. I don't think that's correct.
We are using town property.
Yes, thank you.
We're only using town property in order for the project.
Okay.
Okay. So anyways, we were impressed with Citizens when they came up. They were actually the, in this case, they're the highest bidder, because we're looking at revenues coming in, not the lowest bidder on cost, so they were giving us more money than anybody else, and that's so, they just buy a few thousand dollars. But they also said to us, one of the reasons why we could be so competitive is because anytime we make any money, we turn around and give it away. That their whole basis for, you know, they started in nineteen seventy-nine with oil trading in Latin America and in Africa to develop revenues. They channeled those into charitable programs in the U.S., and they've been constantly on the lookout for other opportunities to, to, to make money in, in a fashion that they can donate. In two thousand and ten, they started Citizens Solar, and it's become one of the largest developers in the state of Massachusetts. As of two thousand and sixteen, they've completed a hundred-million-dollar portfolio, including ten distributed solar projects in Massachusetts. And that, that's solar fields on landfills, basically. That's where you do a net metering thing, you spread it up and you distribute, then you redistribute it through, working with the power companies. So to make it simple, how it works, we just wanted to show, so a lot of people ask questions, where does the, how does this really work? And that's, that's what we're going to try to go on right now. So first thing is they put, right here, you, you can see the solar panels on top of the landfill. They're, they're basically, you go right on the ground, and they sit on concrete pads, so there's no digging in the dirt at all, they set right on top of it, and all the wires are all connected like that. And then, then they're connected to a transformer, that they run up this line right here, this runs all the way down to the landfill down here, this is up at this, at Sam Turner Road, that Sam Turner Road right there, this is the substation. This is where the, the Citizens Energy's power comes into the grid and goes into the grid. The net metering takes place as it leaves the landfill, they know how much it's in there, runs up the wires to here, and gets plugged in the grid. Now this power goes and shared with everybody, not just one particular place, it goes the entire grid. And then what Eversource does is they take those net metering credits and they give it back to the town, that the town can use to pay for their electric bills. So that's the flow of the energy from the, from the solar panels to the grid, out to the whole world, and then because they, they measure how much power goes in, seven million kilowatts, they give the credits back to the landowner, which is the town, on, on that case.
Question. What is the, what is the height of that concrete wall?
That's a concrete pad.
A pad, rather.
It's, it's six inches or less.
Oh, that's-
Actually, what it, what it is, is they've come up with a method, they actually have various, various different sizes depending on the size of equipment going on it. But they have these, the whole thing can be assembled by hand and, and pumps, they have these rubber forms, they can walk out, set on with an open bottom on it, they set them down, and then they have a concrete pump, and they just fill them in with concrete and then pull the form, let it harden, pull the form away, and they just go on and set the forms all the way down and then just link it all up. So it can all be done without heavy equipment, it's all been designed on top of landfills, so there's no way it can penetrate the ground or any heavy trucks traveling on it. They've really worked it out, because there's a lot of these that have been built right now, so it's a, it's, it's become a practice, not so much a science right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to get into some numbers later on, but I wanted to start off with a really simple explanation for everybody, because the numbers are confusing. But the important thing to remember here is net metering is running the meter backwards. We're going to show you spreadsheets, numbers, PowerPoint, I mean, power purchase agreements, all those are, is how you calculate the rate for the amount of kilowatts that you're generating. Yes?
And just so we don't lose the forest for the trees, to, to really specifically answer Selectman Moffett's question, what does the town get for allowing the EDIC and Citizens to use the landfill?
That's coming up next.
Can you just say it in short words before we-
Seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, growing at two, two or three percent for twenty-five years.
Thank you.
You say it's on the electric bill.
That's on the electric bill.
That's not cash, that is a credit on an electric-
It's a credit, but it's treated like cash, you apply it to your electric bill. It, it covers not only the generation costs, but the transportation costs, the entire bill. It gets to be applied against the entire bill, yes.
Mine, I just want to be clear, who gets to make that decision? I thought the town decided whether it was a cash out or a credit.
I, I think that's a decision that's made between the town and Eversource. It's our understanding that in wind turbine projects, you get that decision, that you could get cash or you get a check versus a credit. Typically, what we've learned is that Eversource and solar projects, for some reason, give you a credit against your bill. And we still haven't had those final discussions yet with EDIC, with Eversource, and also we haven't decided which bills in the town, and there's a lot of them, that the credit would be applied to, because we have bills from the town itself, we have bills also from the school district. And so there has to be a decision, which bills do we want have credited from the seven million kilowatt-hours within a general year.
Ms. Wall?
Could you tell me if the electric bills in the town is more than seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, yeah, so far, about three or four days ago, just we were given a copy of all the town's electric bills.
Uh-huh.
So far, we've analyzed nine hundred and fifty monthly payments, and we've come up-
Nine hundred and fifty?
Fifty monthly payments, about a hundred and fifty bills, whatever the math is, divided by, I mean, multiplied by twelve monthly, to develop the kilowatt-hours. We've been keep punching it in, we were surprised it wasn't available in a spreadsheet, so we've been manually looking at all these bills, keep punching them in, we've come up with about eight million kilowatts so far.
Could we do some dollars? Could you tell me some, what, what amount of money?
Well, roughly, the town, I think the, it varies, the, the meters generally change all the time depending on, but let's say you use, we use for our estimate seventeen cents a kilowatt-hour. So you could do eight million times seventeen, it's-
Did you just look at some numbers recently and know that seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars was not, was a low number for the amount we pay? You had some information that when I said seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, is that approximate what we pay a year? And your answer was, oh, no, you pay more.
No.
So-
This is, this is going to produce seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in savings. Your total bill, I don't know the, I don't know the town's total electrical usage, I've been trying to work-
Okay, that's, that's what I was-
I've been trying to work on it. So far, we've identified eight million kilowatts. On it-
We have, we're putting together a spreadsheet that takes every, every bill the manager's office has been nice enough to send us, every electrical bill that the town pays.
Okay.
We're putting that into a spreadsheet. We've totaled up as of right now that the town uses about eight million kilowatts of power. That was our first, we wanted to make sure that, that if we're generating seven million kilowatts, that the town needs at least seven million. They, they do, and now we're going to be totaling up, well, how much are we spending? So that's an ongoing process.
So we don't-
We can assume that we're probably spending-
About one point four.
Yeah, through all departments, somewhere about a million dollars plus a year, that we're sending to Texas every year, because that's where Eversource is.
Mr. Patterson? I think we need to watch our units here, it's really kilowatt-hours.
Kilowatt-hours is what I've been referring to.
Yeah, please, kilowatts is-
Well, we're going to get into the math in a second.
Power generated in any given instant. Kilowatt-hours is a cumulative amount of energy that you consume or produce.
Well, that's why you have to do all twelve months to get the year, to get the kilowatt-hours. And that was the process, we were given one bill, but we had to, we had to, anyways, we've been working on it.
So I just, I just want to be clear, we don't have a, an aggregate billing system with Eversource. We would very much like to have an aggregate billing system. It's not something that's available through Eversource. We've talked to N-Star Eversource for many years, so that, not that that should be a deterrent, but it is a factor.
You'll kind of end up with it if we go in this program, because they have something called the Schedule Z, that you have to give them every meter that you wanted to apply these to, and they track it every year, and you have to apply the discounts. You, you take the, we were given about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty electric bills, and those would all go into a Schedule Z. And someone at the town would sit down and say, okay, we have seven hundred thousand dollars in credits, and we would like to apply them against all these bills.
Yeah, so I think head of this point is, right now, the town writes, I don't know if you write individual checks for each one of those, those bills, so we get over a hundred and somewhat electrical bills every month that comes into the town, and someone's got to go through, analyze those, write a separate check for each one of those accounts. And if there's a way we can find to consolidate that through this process, I think would save us some time, obviously, from an administrative standpoint.
That's going to save the administrative costs for the town, hopefully.
That's something, now that we have all the bills and we're putting them together.
It's bifurcated, it, it's been held with every department, every consumer analyzes their consumption, they pay their bills monthly, and so Public Works pays its bills, the town manager pays, it's, it's very much spread out through the town.
Decentralized.
And, and of course, the significant majority of the bills are paid through the school budget on the school department side and not on the town.
All right, let's continue with the presentation. I'm sure we'll have more questions.
Okay, so, but, but anyways, I just want to go back to the, the real simple explanation here, because it gets more complicated. But to just understand that basically the meter goes backwards, and the numbers we're going to be looking at is just how the credits are calculated, and they have to be against a municipal kilowatt-hour load, KWH load. So every bill has a KWH on it, how many kilowatt-hours for that bill, and in order to apply for these credits, you have to identify those kilowatt-hours. So that's part of the things we've been working on. So here's the deal that lays out, we're starting off, we're asking the town to lease the land to the EDIC for one dollar and sign a power purchase agreement, saying the town will, will take these credits against their bill, that you'll use the power right now. The, the EDIC is going to sublease the land back out to Citizens, Citizens Energy for a hundred thousand dollars. Citizens is going to produce, and this is the size of, this is what a, a six-megawatt produces in kilowatt-hours, is seven million, six hundred and seventy kilowatt-hours running for a whole year. Eversource is going to give, this is the, the credit rate that's currently right now for net metering for municipalities, you get seventeen cents a kilowatt-hour, so this seven million kilowatts at seventeen is worth one million, three in net metering credits. Okay, right there. If the town was to build the whole thing and invested them fifteen million dollars, that would be, you, we'd keep all that. But what we decided to do is we didn't want to do any of that, we wanted to have a third party come in, so the town is, instead of getting the whole seventeen, we're going to get the seven cents times that, or the total credits for the town is going to be seven hundred, around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, all this is just how we calculate the meter running backwards for this amount of kilowatt-hours. So, but, I mean, that's, it's actually not as complicated as it looks, that if you look at the seventeen and the seven, say there's ten cents multiplied by the seven million, it's really close to seven hundred thousand. So if you, if you jump into the math that way, I've been doing these numbers for a long time, so it's clear to me, but really, the one way to look at it is seventeen minus that right there, let's say, let's call that ten cents, times seven million, seven hundred thousand. So that's the savings really, really quickly. But they'll guarantee this number, we get a, we get an eighty percent guarantee on this production of these seven million-dollar kilowatts. So when we sign the contract with them, it's a set number, they're very, very confident of it. And on top of that, we get ninety-five thousand dollars, the assessing department, a year after this, up at January first, night, two thousand and seventeen, the assessors will go out to the property, they'll bring an expert in on appraising electrical generators, and they'll come in and they'll figure out what it's worth, and they'll set a property tax on it, and they'll start taxing Eversource. And my estimate that's, that's going to be ninety-five thousand dollars a year, that's an annuitized rate. I looked at what we did, what Mashpee did, and I took their numbers and I grossed it up for the size of ours and turned it into annuity, but I, I did a mathematical thing, but that's, that's the number that I had, predict the taxes would be on, on something of this size.
That's, X is a personal property?
Personal property.
Not land, okay.
Personal property.
So CEC gets ten cents, is that right?
Yes.
And we get seven cents?
Right.
And why do they get ten cents?
They're spending fifteen million dollars to build it, and we're spending nothing.
That's, that's what pays off their investment.
They have investors, yeah. We decided, our choice was to go for third party for a couple of different reasons. One, we didn't want to risk into their town's money. The other thing about it is that the investment tax credits always have to be a third party, and the town wasn't eligible to do that. So they get, they actually get more than, than, than that. They also get all the SRECs, which are solar, solar energy recoverable credits, and they get the investment tax credits from the federal government. So they, and they syndicate that out to a bunch of investors, those investors all lend them the fifteen million dollars, and they build this on our land.
I, I guess I'm a little bit leery about the town leasing to an organization land for one dollar a year, that they then lease out for a hundred thousand dollars a year. And I think, hmm, if I were a business owner or a landowner, I think, I have land, I'm leasing it to somebody for a dollar, and they're making a hundred thousand dollars on the land. That, that-
Well, you can understand, I understand that, but we've got to remember, we consider ourselves to be part of the town, that everything we do on the EDIC is for the town's benefit.
Let's make that fifty and fifty. Will we lease it to the EDIC for fifty?
That's a negotiation we can do, we leave, for an example here, we, we brought this forward, we, we, I think we've created some real value here, and we're trying to show you that we can do more for you.
I agree, but I, I can't, I can't imagine going to town meeting and tell them, we're leasing it to an organization for a dollar that's making a hundred percent, I mean, the percentage profit is ten thousand percent?
A hundred thousand.
It's a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand percent?
But I think if you look at it in the sense of- But I think if you look at it, but I think if you look at it in the sense of, how much overall savings, and how much is the town...
But do you understand, I mean...
We don't have those numbers.
Well, that's what they're giving right there.
Yeah, but there's some other things, too. We've been working this for three years. We've invested a hundred thousand dollars of our own money. We're all volunteers. You know, you, we're trying to...
Jim, that did not come out of your pocket. That came from out of, the money EDIC gets is also from the town, right?
Well, not, not any longer, no. That was many, many years ago. It's money that, you could probably say goes back, 'cause the money that the EDIC has right now is from sale of some of the property in the tech park. And that's, and we don't have any one land to sell at the tech park.
But where did that hundred thousand dollars that you said you spent for this come from?
Out of the EDIC account.
And where did EDIC get it?
From selling property at the tech park.
And where'd they get that property?
They got that property from the town way before we were involved.
Right, but I mean, it is town money.
Well, we look at it as all town money.
And, and what we're trying to do here is generate some revenue for the EDIC, so they can continue on doing the things that they have been doing for the various projects, help out small businesses, many things that the EDIC does. Because without generating some revenue to EDIC, their plot's just gonna dwindle away. So that's one of the reasons why the EDIC is doing this project, and also the train station, but the money from the train station is minimal. So that's, that's what the use of the money would be.
Yeah, that's one of my issues, too. And I'd like to see exactly what your future offerings to the town are gonna be. I, I wanna see what your strategic plan is and specific projects that you're planning that would be supported by just such an income. I think we need something tangible to answer those questions that are gonna come at the town meeting.
For the two million dollars.
Exactly. What's gonna be the future benefit in providing you with that kind of income?
Well, the, the main thing was, is we were hoping to actually develop the staff, actually have someone that works for us right now. Every, every minute that's been put into this is all volunteer hours. And, and it's a tremendous amount of time that's gone into it. And in order to keep up this kind of effort, we would like to have some kind of administrative capabilities. And our goal was to develop some kind of income stream, so we could grow as an organization and do other things. I mean, one of the, we, we should talk about, there's a lot of different things on it, but we've talked about, you know, the comprehensive plan talks about morphing the EDIC into a, a totally different arm, a development arm of the town doing other things. It's what, really, we're appointed by you, we do what you want. It's whatever you want us to do. I mean, that's, you're, that, that's the way you really need, that's the way we look at it, and you should look at it the same way.
I'm sorry, I'm sort of way, way down the road a little bit, but thank you for the work. I, believe me, I know how much effort that you have put in and the time and the detail to get here, so thank you for that. Can I just, I have a question. Who, who do you envision through this, the different relationships? We'll be doing the annual reporting, the monitoring to make sure that the energy produced by the solar panels are actually producing what's anticipated, the inspections, the reporting to the state, any transfers, that, there's some administration that goes along with this.
All, all that has to be handed by the contractor, which, which is Citizens Energy. All that, all reporting, everything accounting, it's all on them.
So every town report that has to be done, they'll be doing.
Yeah, I don't think it goes quite on automatic pilot. I think there are probably some tasks that we'll have to do, that we'll be responsible for, monitoring them, because they're contracted to us. We have a subpiece, a lease agreement with the town. They may call us, call, for us to do some of those things. So, but as Jim said, you know, we don't have a staff right now. So we're open to the allocation and how the hundred thousand would be used. Um, I think that's a legitimate question and a concern. So we just wanted to briefly, you know, make you aware of, you know, what our thoughts are. We haven't put down a budget for the next, you know, ten years or twenty-five years, but we have been operating with no staff for a number of years, and with the projects that we've taken on, which we all enjoy doing, um, we can only do so much just with our volunteer board. So that would be one of the things that we wanna look at.
Well, you know, I, I don't wanna get into that whole discussion, you know, about being a volunteer board, but you are created under a statute of common law, the EDIC. So you are separate from the town. You, the only, the statute states that the selectmen appoint the members of the EDIC, but you're totally separate from the town. There is no connection there, other than the appointment.
We have our own statute.
Exactly.
Yeah, I have a question about the energy credits. Is there an expiration on them? In other words, is, is it possible that the town might be in a period when it's not consuming as much electricity as the solar panels are producing, and therefore, later on, when we need more energy credits, they're not available to us anymore? Do they expire? How does, how does EverSource account this? On an annual basis, or is it on a monthly basis?
These are contracted, they're for the life of the contract. These are twenty-five years, they're spelled out, and they're identified, and they're, they're right here. That's what we, when we structured this deal, we didn't wanna go after the SRECs or other things that, which are state credits that fluctuate all over the place. We said to all the bidders, now, what our strategy was to go to seven different bidders and say, look, we don't wanna play that game. We want to buy energy at a fixed rate, and we wanna rent, and we want it for twenty-five years, we want it guaranteed. So all the risk about whether SRECs are up or down, or government funding, we, we put it out to the bidders and had them bid it up. And I, I think if you look at what we did, to give, as an example, Mashpee went out two years ago, and their power purchase rate was twelve cents. Okay? They, ours is seven. That's a considerably different, big, different number. And what the bidders all told us, why we, we got such great bids, is one, the biggest thing we did is, two years ago, a year and a half ago, we invested eighty thousand dollars to go out and did the inter, the connection with EverSource. We, they had to pay for the engineering. We took that out of the way, and we made sure that was doable. We hired Weston and Sampson to totally design the whole thing and engineer it. So when the bidders came in, they said, my God, these guys have figured it everything out. So we got one of the highest bids, uh, of, or lowest of cost, or highest bids in revenue of any solar project that's ever gone out. They were fighting over it to get it, because our, we had spent enough, a lot of time organizing and working on putting it out to bid, and had a package, if you take a look at it, was really competitive. And they, in fact, I had to ask three or four of them why the numbers were so great, and they said they'd never seen a package that was, been so well prepared at the time. We've been working on it for three or four years. We've had all kinds of hearings about it, it's been a long time.
I think Mr. Patterson's question was, if the town has less need for the power that we're generating, what happens to the credits?
Right.
If, if the town, you know, doesn't have a need for as much energy, because we're doing more energy efficient building in the future, what happens to the credits that are generated in the future?
We have to apply them against, we can't use them. They have, they have to be applied. My understanding is they have to be applied against municipal kilowatt hours.
Within that twenty-five-year period, or within that month, or within that year?
By the month?
No, it's within the twenty, you could bill them up within the whole year, or, or many years. In fact, some, some cases, uh, the bills aren't looked at in the past, not for Falmouth, but they actually accumulate credit balances for a while, and then, then in the summertime, the air conditioning comes on, and they, you know, and you can reallocate from invoice to invoice, too, in the Schedule D. If you, if you allocate it to a property against a bill, and now you stop using that, the next year, you can switch it to another one. The, the Schedule Z, which is the allocation of the invoices of the, of the electric meters, is something that the town gets to do. They, you do it along with EverSource, I mean, along with Citizens Energy. They print it up, and they give it to EverSource. And, but you get to allocate this, these cash, this, this seven hundred and, or seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, in essence, is like, is a cash payment. It's a coupon that you get to use to pay your electric bills, and you treat it like cash. It's against the whole thing, not just the energy costs. Yes, Heather?
Do you mind if I just probe that area just a little bit more? I wanna get it straight in my head. So the, the only, the benefit to the town is relative to the net metering credits only. So if the town reduces consumption, which of course we hope we do, reduces consumption, then the value of those credits go down. But the amount of energy generated by the solar panels continues to, to be the same. Hopefully, you're still generating the same amount of energy. Is there a, a...
No.
Feature in the contract that allows that? Okay, go ahead. You understand the question?
Yes, I understand the question. The energy generation, the credits are forecasted amount, we already know what it is, for the whole twenty-five years. So the credits get generated, and you can apply it against the whole bill. If, in fact, uh, the town's electric bills drop below, uh, a million, three hundred thousand dollars, then that, in an aggregate, but it, that, then that's a possibility. But as far as the credits go, they're fixed.
Okay, so that's a one-time fix to spend all the twenty-five years?
What happens is, this is based on the, the size of the system. The, a six megawatt system generates that, and it decreases in efficiency by half a point a year for twenty-five years. So we already have a whole schedule of exactly what that's gonna be, and it's exactly multiplied by, uh, that number there in, in a cash flow that we can provide extreme detail on. Okay, but that's all, and that's, that'll be guaranteed at eighty percent of this number. But they tell us that these things outperform the eighty percent all the time. They can tractionally guarantee eighty percent.
So what Jim is saying is that their, citizens will be guaranteed to the town that they'll produce at a minimum eighty percent of that seven million, six hundred and seventy thousand kilowatts a year. That's what they'll, they'll guarantee to us.
So I have two, I guess it's still the same question that Mr. Patterson's asking. If the seven fifty-nine, two fifty, if we have bills less than that, and that could happen if we consume less energy, but also the turbines are also providing us with some net metering. And if the turbines provide enough net metering that that number goes down, we just don't get anymore?
No, they're still in the last step alternative. These, these credits are marketable, and any municipality anywhere in southeastern Massachusetts can also use them, and you can sell them to them if you don't, don't have it. So you don't get stuck with them. In fact, I asked the installers, what would happen if a town didn't want anything? They said you could probably find another town that would love to have them, 'cause they'd all would like to buy at seven cents a kilowatt hour instead of seventeen.
Okay, now, the second thing is, uh, this is a question I think I asked about a year ago. I just wanna be very clear, with the six kilo, the six megawatts plus the two megawatts, can our system, can EverSource's system take that input of electricity?
Yes.
If the turbines ran twenty-four seven? And I'm not suggesting that, but if that eventuality...
We don't know. We could actually use, one of the things we haven't provided, we, no one shared with us exactly how the town's credits on the wind turbines work.
It's not credits. This is the power being produced by someone other than EverSource.
Right.
That they, that, when the turbines went in, we, they had, EverSource had to put in the ability to take more energy from us than they were producing.
So on this project, as you recall, it's gonna cost citizens a million dollars to upgrade the infrastructure to get to that substation. So they figured that into their cost. So it'll be a million dollars to upgrade the system.
To be able to take...
To be able to take the initial three that we are, that, that they've approved, and then, we're not sure what the cost is gonna be for the additional three.
And the additional two.
Then the additional two, depending upon where it's located. The additional two doesn't need to be located in Falmouth. It could be located someplace else, and Falmouth could still benefit from it. So, but we don't know where it's gonna be, so we don't know what the infrastructure is and what it will cost to hook that up.
So what if I don't, we don't know those...
Well, the, the...
Again, that isn't, we're not asking for anything regarding that additional two megawatts at this point in time.
If the town doesn't want, the, the town can't use this six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, these are very marketable. They can only be used by municipalities. This is a program that the state put, Massachusetts put together, only for municipalities. And many people don't have the size landfill that we do have, or have studied it or produced it. I've been told that from every single, I asked that question of every single bidder, and they said, there's no problem. We can find somebody to take that, and you can sell them.
Could you explain a little bit about the timeframe? Uh, we've heard that there are credits that are expiring, which I believe have been renewed.
Right.
And is no longer an issue.
We're not as worried about that right now as we were when we first started.
I've also heard that the state and the energy committee is getting together to outlaw, or to not allow any more municipal projects after this year.
Well, there are some areas outside of the EverSource district. EverSource serves mostly southeastern Massachusetts. There are some areas that are not served by EverSource, it's national grid. Some of those communities have produced enough renewable energy that national grid isn't taking anymore. We don't think that's true right now of EverSource, so we think that we're, we're safe there.
Because I've heard that there's a bill going to the legislature to stop...
Yeah, there's a net metering...
Any more municipal solar projects.
Right. Well, luckily, we've, prior before that, we're ahead of it. So they, we're, we're, one, we're exempt from that, and two, it's not here, and it's not at EverSource. That's a, a national grid issue in the western part of the state. It could come here. If everyone keeps jumping on the bandwagon, someday it would. But this, uh, this is ready to be contracted, so we're locked in. We've already applied. We've already filed the money with EverSource. We, we have spent, we being the town and the EDIC, we have spent almost a hundred thousand dollars to lock the, to lock that advantage in there.
Okay, it has to be the EDIC. Can't be the town's doing that.
Yes.
And there is, there is a possibility, because there is a, a max on how much each town can have renewable energy to put into the grid, and it's, it's ten megawatts. And, but the EDIC, because we're a, so what about a, a public entity, can also have ten megawatts.
So we actually found out, we could actually double the, the capacity of the town by being a town entity doing it.
Clarification. It's actually citizens that gets that credit, right? It's not EDIC.
Right.
Yep.
Right. But there is a ten, the, the state restricts the connections in two ways. One, no more than six megawatts on any one parcel anywhere in the state. That's a cap that they have. And no more than ten megawatts for any municipal organization. The lucky thing is, is they consider the EDIC to be a municipal organization, and that a town of Falmouth to be in a municipal organization. So in this way, as we go forward, we, we now have a twenty megawatt cap instead of a ten, so that we feel comfortable that we can actually go around and find some more areas where this can apply. Hopefully, that's something you'd look forward to the EDIC doing for the town.
Is that gonna preclude the, what you talked about earlier about having the EDIC actually eventually merge into being a town entity?
Well, I didn't say it'd merge into a town entity. Uh, uh, there, there's certain things, we've studied it with our attorneys, and there's, there's, and the, the local comprehensive plan has looked at several different ways. There, there are more developed, what we found is, we've become more of a developer than we really thought we would, and there's, there's development organizations that could, that could be that way. And the trick is, is four or five different structures, and we'll be coming to you and then going to town meeting and say, look, here's the choice. We think we fit into this category from this, so we wanna change our hat a little bit to fit more what we do. But that's down the road.
If we were to become a redevelopment agency, we'd have to be a separate agency, because there are many steps that require you to form a redevelopment agency. You have to form an area, it's gotta have, it's gotta be defined, has to have a light. The light doesn't mean physically, it can mean other things. But then you actually have to form a separate redevelopment agency. We don't see where we could just convert automatically right into us.
All right, we keep interrupting. Is there more to the presentation?
Yes. Now, we're getting down to where the numbers are, okay? This is, the reason why these change over the years is because we're, we, the plant's getting bigger. We're going ahead. We spent our money for a three megawatt plant. We're all set, ready to go. We have a connection agreement with EverSource, all paid for and ready to go. During the bidding process, everyone said, what the heck, why don't you make it bigger? You guys are crazy. You should go for the whole thing. So they, they convinced us to, to go for, you know, a six megawatt, so we, that's the way we bid it. The trouble is, is that's a new internet, that's a new connection, it's gonna take more time. So it's getting phased in over time. And that's why the, the, the benefits down the road, this is, this is the number that will continue for twenty years, and this is the first year at a smaller system that's all priced and ready to go. And this is one, by the time, by the time the end of the year comes, by two thousand seventeen, this is the level we'll be generating at. So it became phased in over time, phase one and phase two.
Why does it say payment regarding EDIC? A payment on pilot and town is a benefit. Is the benefit a payment?
Well, we put the town benefits are over here. That's just a semantics. We put the benefit, this is the benefits for the town.
Is that a cash benefit?
Total. It's just adding up all the columns.
Yeah, I know.
This is a tax payment. This is what Citizens Energy, this is what I estimated Citizens Energy will be paying the town in, in property tax, you know, equipment tax. And that was a consulting with the assessor's office. I didn't do that on my own.
Well, that's a cash payment.
And the benefit is what? Is energy right there?
The benefit's the sum of all three.
The sum of all...
Well, the two. This number here, this number here, and that adds up to that.
But it's not...
So you use on the electrical...
It's credits. So it's credits.
It's seven sixty...
Ninety-five thousand is actual cash.
Seven sixty-eight in year two is credits against the electrical bills. So that's, less money coming out. And then ninety-five thousand is actual cash that's paid to the assessor's office.
Oh, to the assessor's office.
Yep.
At the end of the day, you're not paying this, and you're giving that, and it adds up to that.
Other years, pretty much... Other years, pretty much the same?
No, uh, it grows. And also, um, keep in mind too, that this power purchase agreement is a fixed rate, you know, that we get the same rate from the town the whole time. And if energy costs double, we still get, we still buy it at seven cents. So if you, the way to look at this, look back 20 years ago, what we were paying for electricity and, and take a look at that. For instance, I remember when they were doing, uh, the wind farm out in, and, and the sound, they were talking 19 cents a kilowatt hours, the rates that those things were being charged at, you know? So we're buying at seven. If you would, if you wanted to project what electrical cost will be right now for our modeling, we use 17 cents for, as an estimate for all bidders. I had to pick a number so we gave everyone the same bid because some of them use 20. They all would change it around. I said, no, no, everyone's going to do the same number so I could compare. So I, I, I meant, we chose 17. But, you know, every one of you can say, what do you think electric costs are going to be in the next 10 years? I have a feeling you'll say there'll be more than 17 cents a kilowatt hour.
But go back to that slide. The savings may go up because of what you just mentioned, but the efficiency of the cells is.
Half a point a year.
Could be 80%.
Nah, no. You're saying, you're saying your worst case scenario and they're guaranteed. They've never had to, to play the guarantee, but our consultants and everyone tells us that these, this $7 million, uh, 7 million kilowatt's a pretty accurate estimate.
So if you wanted to do a conservative estimate, you could just.
You could take 80% of it.
That would be the conservative because anything.
And that would be guaranteed.
Yeah, anything below that, they guarantee.
And the efficiency only drops off a half a point a year. The, the, the 7 million kilowatt hours degrades at a half a point a year.
And, but I mean, so if the rates go up by half a point and the, the production goes down by half a point, the, that savings isn't going to change much. And the pilot, the pay, the taxes are going to go down because their equipment is valued less and less and less.
Well, no, actually the, 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 the number I use for taxes is a annuitized flat rate. That's for the whole 20 years.
Okay.
I already took that into consideration, okay? I took the present value and I turned it back to the annuity and made it level. It's a mathematical jump.
Yep.
It starts off real high, goes real low. I leveled, I annuitized it to, to make it flat so you could.
So certainly that would be flat.
That's, or the equipment mathematically, it's a math, it'll probably be a lot higher in the beginning and a lot lower in the end. But you could go, but you could go to them and say, hey, let's just do agree to a flat price. That's up to you.
Okay. But I see what number you're using for that, okay.
But anyways, that's an annuitized equivalent level payment that I calculated.
Sam?
Sort of along the same line. This, this, a contract lasts till, for 25 years, correct?
Yes.
Who actually owns the equipment at the end of that 25 years?
We have, in the agreement with citizens, we'll have a buyout where we could buy it at a certain price after 15 years if we wanted to. I think we have a buyout again.
We have three different levels of buyout, whatever we want, if we wanted to. I, I, to answer your question, Citizens Energy and they take it away at the end of the year, if we, at the end of the 25 years, if we don't want them to. My own opinion is we're going to do something that's called the blend and extend. That when we get 15, 20 years into this, the efficiency of these, uh, these panels will be all new things and we're going to renegotiate the deal and cut a whole new deal with them and have them put all new panels in, more efficient equipment and start the thing over again for another 25 years, 15 years into it. And then do a blended rate and extend it out over time, just like a landlord does in a building where you don't wait until the end of the 20-year lease for your tenant and say, okay, where are you going to go now? 10 years before or five, you try to redo it beforehand. And that, that's what we are attempting to do that here too.
And they'll be bond for removal also?
Yes, 100%.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think if you look at the tax laws, um, this is equipment attached to the land and that belongs to the property owner technically.
That'll be, let the lawyers in, I'm not going to use that question.
I'm saying, but I just want to make sure if we're looking at a contract, you know, this is anticipated, that's all.
This contract specifically says it's Citizens Energy Equipment, that it's not the town, that they're responsible for maintaining it. The town doesn't have to, and they have to take it off the property at the end. So, I mean, contractually, we've said it's not our equipment.
There'll be a bond that they'll have to post in order to make sure that occurs. And they'll be responsible also for a good portion of the maintenance out there, along the line around the equipment and so on. And they're meeting with, with P, at PPW to talk about who's going to be responsible for what out there on going too.
Okay.
Okay, now we're, these are just two quick, we have two agreements we're asking you to look, look at. The first one is, uh, Mr. Duffy or somebody came up with an intergovernmental agreement. It's really a lease that went between the town and, uh, and the EDIC. And this is just talking about what we're talking, you know, the premises is the capped area, the landfill, the term's 25 years. We are leasing it from you as is. You don't have to do anything. We're just going to take it the way it is. So there's nothing you have to do on it. The rent is a dollar per year. The approved use is a solar net metering facility. It's considered a net lease. The town is not required to make any expenditures for this at all. No maintenance, no investment. The, all the costs of doing everything is being put onto Citizens Energy. And anything Citizens Energy wants, they have to submit to us and we have to submit to you. All plans and specifications of any, anything at all that's installed on it, uh, the town gets to review and we would assume you would hire Weston and Sampson, which is our consultant and your consultant, to look at it and say, yeah, this is okay, to, to give you expertise. And the lease requires that the site to be restored back to the same condition it was at the beginning of the lease. So 25 years from now, get the capped landfill back with grass growing on it, if you want.
Under improvements, all plans are expected to be approved by the town. If you recall, the rezoning of the property, the solar array is a permitted use. But we have said that we would bring the plans to the planning board for review so they can have a chance to review and other people in the public can too. So we're not just going to do the plans in the downtown public committee. We'll bring them to the planning board and get an, and put into, into the.
Technically, do we have to wait till Attorney General gets back to say that he approves the rezoning or the change in bylaws to, that says that they could be used for this purpose?
My understanding is whenever I've been involved in a zoning change, it's a 20-day appeal process and you just keep going. I don't know about anything more. We'd have to go to Mr. Duffy on that, but I, I know, I'm, I'm familiar with the 20-day waiting period and then go after that, but.
I thought it had to be approved.
Frank has another answer for you.
I think the Attorney General has to approve that change before it really is in stone. Is that correct?
That's correct. For 20 days, Mr. Fox is talking here about us in appeal from a decision of the Board of Appeals on a permanent. Uh, zoning change is not the same. Uh, I think the Attorney General has up to 75 days.
Okay, and we have not heard back from him that he has approved that or not.
Okay, so that's agreement number one. And the other agreement we're asking for is a power purchase agreement. It's really pretty simple. It's referred to as a PPA, so you'll hear, you'll see that in, as you're reading the documents. It's for 25 years, the same length as the other. The rate is, um, what we're going to get by the power at, well, by the power at, the credit generating, remember, this is, this is just, all this agreement is, is how we generate credits based on these kilowatt hours. That's all this is. It's a formula to generate credits and you know it's basically $760,000 is what it generates. And what, what they did is for the first 10 years, they're locking in the, the rate at flat of 10 years. So no matter what the cost of electricity goes up for the first 10 years, even if it doubles, we're still only paying, our, our, not we're paying, but our credit's being generated at this, this number. And I want to keep bringing in mind, when Mashpee died, did this 20-year agreement, they're, they're fixed at 12 cents a kilowatt hour. They only did it a year ago. So this is a pretty competitive, uh, pretty competitive number. And then 10 years, in the 11th year, um, Citizens Energy proposed kicking it up a little bit to eight cents and then they want to grow it at 1% a year for the years going out forward. And now we have this in the spreadsheet, all numbered out and you can receive the numbers, but I didn't bother putting it up here because it's just numbers upon numbers upon numbers. But the long and the short of it is, if you really come to simple math, is you take that number there, seven, you know, that, compared to the cost of 17 or a differential of 10, 10, 10 cents divided by that is 76, $760,000. And every nickel that the costs go up in the future, that number just gets bigger and bigger because our number here is frozen in for the first 10 years.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. What happens in years 21 to 25?
We haven't looked that far out. I mean, we could continue. I would say that the numbers would just continue. My, our opinion is that it'll be renegotiated by, at that time, that you, if you wanted to ask that, the contract will say that number will carry forward. I didn't bother printing it out, but the contract will do it for the last five years. But realistically, I, I think of 15 or 20 years, a blend and extend's going to be done on this, that there'll be some changes. The panels, just in the years we've been doing this, the three or four years we've been working on this, the cost of a watt of electricity for a panel has come down from $5 a watt to $2.5 a watt. The cost has been cut in half in the three or four years we've been working on it. The efficiency of the panels is getting greater. They're now talking about these out within films that you can just apply to things. My opinion is 10 years from now, there'll be a whole new technology and 15 years from now, this will get renegotiated with some other, um, type of panel. And I actually feel that this is going to be a use that could be there for 50 years. That just seems to be a perfect application as far as we can tell now. But the good news is, is if 25 years, if it doesn't work, they, Joe Kennedy's company has to come and take these things away. And we're not only holding, the lease will not only hold them, have a bond, but will take the corporate credit, the guarantee that they perform on it. And that's one of the things we looked at in making the decision, our recommendation to you, is we were really, really looking hard at the, the, the credit of the underlying corporation that's doing this because that's really, at the end of the day, that's who we're going to be making a deal with.
I would hope that we'd have the 25-year in the contract.
Oh, we'll put it in the contract. I just didn't, I think it is. I just didn't go out further.
Okay.
The cash flows, I, I cut them off at 20 years because it was, uh, it was really getting out there. And that is it.
So there was a, a lot of questions that we need to come back to and answer. Uh, we've had a meeting with the management's office and the town attorney. And, uh, we've done two rounds of these agreements. Our attorney has drafted a second set. I'm sure there'll be some more questions. And we hope to come back in, in a couple of weeks and, um, answer other questions. I think there's been a request for Mr. Kennedy to, to come to the meeting to explain to you a little bit more about Citizens Energy. Got to remember, they've been doing this for 10 years. Jim and I have been doing this for three years. We've learned a lot in the last three years, but they know a lot more about how this works and may have answered some of the questions we were able to provide you.
Well, I do want to express our appreciation and I think it's extremely exciting and I'm sorry if I'm coming across leery, but given our other energy project, I really want to make sure that we're being very careful. And I know also at town meeting, people were very concerned about the authorization for us to sign this lease without town meeting ever getting a chance to see it and that they authorized us. And so that's why I think we're trying to be very, very careful in making sure that we're doing our due diligence and creating that lease.
Doug, one of the things we did do and we presented to you at, at previous meetings is we evaluated just about every other kind of use that could be done on this site.
Right.
And there was about 20 different uses and every single one of them required a significant investment and had no income. And so that's why, that's why a couple of years ago, we took a look at this and said, well, we can keep looking at other things, but we really should be paying attention to this because in the long run, this could have been done a couple of years ago and we could have had that $700,000 in this year's budget.
Well, I think it's the right thing to do. I just am very careful about rushing and, and I just don't want to rush into a mistake.
As they say, the devil's in the details.
And I think you guys have done, done some great work on those details and it just, that's just to explain why, if it feels like we're reluctant, resistant or causing trouble, it's.
We want to make sure it's right too.
We, we understand, but I, I, I think if you would, could talk with, uh, your counterparts in other towns, there's ten of these on the Cape right now. And you ask them what their power purchase agreement is and would they like to have a seven instead of a 12? And they'll ask you, how the hell did you do that? Excuse me. It's because we've put a lot of hard work, studied it, and we have a beautiful piece of wide open property with, that, that it looks like the only thing that can be done with it is capping it and putting the solar field on.
So we're making, uh, vote tonight, are there any other questions for the board? I know Mr. Finer has a question also.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make, I would ask if I may on behalf of the board, Mr. Galasso, Mr. Fox, if we could get a copy of the, the PowerPoint so we could transmit it to all members of the board? We had not received that previously and I think you would find that helpful as you prepare for your next meeting.
And save it on your desktop before I leave right now.
And I wouldn't mind seeing the 25 years.
Yep, the spreadsheets.
The spreadsheets of the 25 years. I would, I would be happy to see that.
And we can share with you the spreadsheet. We have it on all town bills too.
I actually have it, but they're too complicated to go through tonight.
I understand.
And, and for, for anyone that wants to, um, I did it with Susan. The, the, the easy way to do it, if you're a spreadsheet user, is be on your computer, call me, we go through key by key and then you can touch the buttons and you can see the formulas. And by the time we get, do the whole thing, you'll, you'll understand it more than just looking at a, this huge page of numbers.
Mr. Finer?
Yes.
Leave that in there?
Oh, sorry.
Which, which one? About to ask a question, so I want you to.
How does he get to ask questions?
Yeah, I called him up and asked if, said he wanted to ask a question.
Mr. Finer? Please.
I just don't understand it.
The question's directed to me.
EDIC, that's the number. And, uh, that's it, yep.
Okay, Mr. Finer, please.
Jimmy might have to share the mic.
Jimmy, yeah.
Um, can you put the, uh, slide up with the electricity prices on it, please?
Yep.
No one in this town can do this.
I get one more.
I just don't believe it.
Uh, no, that, that one was correct. Yeah, um, you have, uh, EverSource gives CEC 17.5 cents per kilowatt hour. I just negotiated my electric bill for 10.9 cents. There's, there's in effect no delivery charge, so it's already there. So CEC, I'm not done with my question yet. I'm not done, let me answer it. Okay. So CEC, EverSource is required to pay CEC 17.5 cents a kilowatt. If I can buy it for 10.9, I'm sure they can buy it for the 7.6 we're selling it to. So in effect, EverSource is pay, is a corporation. They're paying more money than the going rate.
You're misunderstanding.
Uh, let me just finish my question first, okay?[1649.81] Let me just finish my question first, okay? Maybe I am completely incorrect, but let me phrase the question first. If Eversource has given them 17 and 1/2 cents for something they could buy for 7 cents, they're a corporation, are they not gonna pass that on to the ratepayers?
Oh, that's an interesting question.
I thought so.
First, let me answer the first part.
Chair, the mic, please.
The first part. Keep in mind, they're giving us these credits. If we change that number to 10, the number goes down, becomes 700,000 starters instead of a million.
Well, I understand that.
So this is actually better than you're doing.
No, I'm, I'm saying from Eversource's point of view, they're gonna pay more, and they're gonna pass it on to the customer. Is that not correct?
We saw an opportunity that the state and the federal government laid out there, and we're jumping on it.
Oh, I, I am not saying that, but they, so they are gonna pass it on to somebody else.
I, that's a political ques, it's, somebody's gonna pay for it.
There you go.
I wanted to get this for the town.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand the question. I think it's been answered.
Well, all right.
It's an interesting point.
I, I just wanted, if we're paying you $100,000 a year, that's, in reality, we'll be paying you $2.5 million by the time this is all, that, into the EDIC's pocket.
We would be funding the EDIC so they can continue to bring innovative programs to this, to the town for the next 25 years. And that's what we want the money for, to hire someone to do that. Absolutely.
Absolutely, and in your pocket.
It adds up in the spreadsheet.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much for the presentation. We will be coming back to it. We're coming to, since we've been here since 6:30, seeing these chairs, we're gonna take a brief recess right now.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Detective, the board directly showing the changes that we are requesting your approval for. So on the procedure, this development received the approval from the selectmen back in 2009, when it was called Holly Park, I believe it was, and it was Cubby Construction. So, local initiative program itself still requires a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B to be issued by the zoning board, the LIP, Local Initiative Program, through our state Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, is just one of the subsidy programs, so-called, that allows a developer to apply to the zoning board for a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit. And so, that took place back now six, seven years ago, and the zoning board did issue the comprehensive permit. I presume because of the economy and the recession and all those things, that project never went forward with a previous developer. So, McGansey Crossing LLC was created to take it over, and somewhat tangential, but just so you know, we've been through the Affordable Housing Committee in the summer that approved the proposed changes. The more recent, in December, meetings with the Local Housing Partnership Committee/Planning Board, we met with them twice, they actually did a site visit, and there is a December 9th letter, very short, but to the selectmen that said that they voted to support the changes to this project. So, it's not asking for approval from the get-go. It already is a local initiative program, LIP project, it already has a comprehensive permit from the zoning board. If we get your approval, we then go on to the zoning board to actually seek the official modification to the comprehensive permit that has been issued.
So, just, since you're the lawyer...
Sure.
I'm just, I'm not clear that when you can change a project and change the developer and change, make all these changes you did, it doesn't start anew. And so, I guess I'm gonna have to take your word for it, because you're his lawyer telling us that it's the same project, but to me, it's a new project. It's a new developer, it's a new, it's, and I'm not sure why, would be something from seven years ago, when we were not involved in LIPS, and I guess I'm, I'm still inclined, until I hear from our attorney, that it is a new project and not something, just because we approved, somebody else approved it seven years ago, that we're in that position of approving it. And we prefer, we just said, hey, let's approve it the way it is, not rely on the seven-year-old thing.
Well, we're asking you to approve modifications, which encompasses what it will be, as is now being proposed by Mr. Galasso and McGansey Crossing. And I understand and hear you on that point, but from a both legal and procedural viewpoint, the important point is for you to understand the process and to chime in and ask questions and hopefully be satisfied. The regulations and the, really the regulations, as well as the procedures, absolutely countenance and expect the types of either extensions, especially because of the recession, so that the permit itself never lapsed, so that's step one. And I consulted with, I shouldn't say consulted with, I talked with at the request of Brian Currie, your town attorney, he had referred things to Frank Duffy's office, and I dealt with Frank and Pam, I think it is there, Pat, rather, sorry. And so, they saw all my documentation. But step one is the permit never lapsed. Step two is, and it happened with some regularity, especially with the recession, that the applicant, the developer, can change, and that's again within the specific 40B, 760 CMR regulations. And I've cited all those things in my various documents, I won't take the time to give the citations now.
Thank you, Bill.
But the regulations, and they've been followed to the letter, the regulations allow for both the subsidizing agency, DHCD, to approve the transfer and the zoning board. And in fact, as we stand here tonight, both DHCD and the zoning board itself has approved the transfer of the permit. So, in that sense, it is, yes, a new developer, but it is the same project, we hope with a few changes, that we consider beneficial.
Right.
So, I hope that addresses what you said.
It does, thank you for clarifying.
Sure, I appreciate that. And just one other, one other quick thing, because I know sometimes people think of LIP and DHCD as being sufficient in itself to have a project go forward, and also the question of counting on the subsidized housing inventory, which I know isn't important. So, the distinction is, there's another process through DHCD that allows so-called local action units, if they have the requisite deed riders for long-term affordability, and the required requisite limits on income for the people who, in this case, buy, it's a for-sale project. If it has all of those indicia and requirements of affordability that state DHCD requires, then if the units were approved under some local bylaw, be it one at a time as a right, or often some local zoning bylaw that might allow additional density with those requirements in place, then it doesn't need a 40B, but it can still count on a town subsidized housing inventory. And they do make it a little confusing, because they refer to those as local initiative, local action units, but that's different than what we're doing, which is the local initiative program as the subsidizing program in order to go to the ZBA. And again, we, not we, but the project itself started that way. There's a project eligibility letter that is based on, was based on the town, together with the applicant at the time, saying to DHCD, the town supports this development as a local initiative program project. And then, it went to the zoning board. So, those are the procedural points. If there's still any confusion, happy to answer now or after Michael's presentation. But that's, you know, that's where we are coming from. And again, the guidelines do spell out, because the town, excuse me, is involved in terms of being, if you will, a supporter, a sponsor, although it's the developer's development and responsibility. What it does point out in the so-called guidelines, there are the Chapter 40B regulations, the Code of Massachusetts Regulation 760 CMR 56, there are also DHCD guidelines that for a local initiative program do say that before we go to the zoning board, we're supposed to come to the, the selectmen in this case, to tell you of our changes and to request your support. So, that is why we're here. We hope to get your support naturally, and then we would be on to the zoning board. So, that's the procedural part. As I say, we have the support of, because we followed the process that the town put in place to work with the Local Housing Partnership Committee as well. And so, that was, we believe, a fundamental first step, to have them approve it, and they really did resoundingly, as I said, they took a site visit. So, to have you comprehend, and that's where the comment by the chairman was certainly appropriate, we want you to understand the whole project and to feel comfortable, and we hope agree with us, why the changes proposed are beneficial, not just to the developer, but to the future residents there and to the town and the neighborhood itself. So, without further ado, I think it makes sense to turn it over to Michael for the...
Before, can I ask a group question? I'm trying to distinguish between a LIP program and a non-LIP program under 40B. I know, one of the questions has become, that we're a co-sponsor of this project as the town, you know, and I'm trying to sort out, you know, to what extent, what role do we play in it, and what kind of responsibilities do we have for this project versus one that's a non-LIP program?
Sure. When it's a non-LIP program, the first step is the same for a developer, except that they would need a different, either subsidizing agency or program. The only other program for a for-sale project is really through the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, known as Mass Housing, where they would issue a project eligibility letter under the so-called New England Fund Program, which, you know, provides funds from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. So, that is how, that is the distinction. On a rental project, there are many other agencies, including other DHCD programs, that could be the so-called subsidizing program in order to then go to the ZBA, such as one that you probably have heard of, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is federal, but the, in Massachusetts, the Department of Housing and Community Development administers it. So, that is the distinction between any other type of development and the local initiative program. The notion of local initiative program was simply created to be another vehicle to help either a for-sale or rental development. And as to what the town's involvement is, there is some more involvement. Number one, because of the fact that both at the get-go, for the initial approval, the developer can't just do it on its own, it has to work with the town and gain that vote. And then, as I explained a few minutes ago, the guidelines, and I brought the big package, but again, unless you want me to read directly, they do say, they spell out a process that says that before seeking a change from the zoning board of appeals, unlike another project where you wouldn't need to come to the selectmen, you would just deal with the zoning board of appeals, because it's a LIP, we come to you, explain, answer your questions, and naturally, we fervently hope you'll give us your support. But, you know, that's, that's what the big significant difference is.
Excuse me. Okay.
In my understanding, if we did not vote support, they could go forward as a 40B?
No, no. No, see, that's the distinction. I can be very candid. If you don't support it, we have to continue to work with you, or basically show DHCD that there are other merits, that somehow, perhaps, I'm not saying you will be, but the words in the guideline that I just referred to, say that if DHCD were to find that the, in this case, approval of these changes was not reasonable, DHCD could still say, yeah, we'll let you go forward as a LIP. But it still is a 40B. And on that point, jumping ahead a bit, the typical difference between this level of scrutiny by the selectmen, not that you shouldn't ask any and every question that you see, and if you have concerns about what we're proposing, absolutely, you should raise them, and we do our best to answer them. But the difference is that the zoning board, it's still a 40B, the zoning board has to approve them. And typically, there's the much higher level of scrutiny on any of the so-called land use issues, in terms of impacts, if they believe that, you know, there is some design issue, or the proposed number of units is too many, or there's some traffic impact, or anything like that. That's where the, you know, the hearings can take place, again, we hope only one time, but if it's one or two or three times to satisfy the zoning board, at the typical level of detail that a zoning board does, when they issue a decision with all of the conditions to the development, that's why I'm not in any way saying that you can brush concerns under the rug, but you can rest assured that the zoning board will deal with and will listen to you. You could certainly support our changes, and if you have any concerns, you would pass them on to the zoning board and ask us to address them in front of the zoning board.
Well, I don't believe we can. We have no authority to tell the zoning board of appeals anything. It's our decision to approve this or not approve it, based on what's presented to us. And we, our authority is only to appoint the zoning board of appeals, we cannot direct them.
You're absolutely right, and I didn't say direct, I didn't say direct, but what typically happens is, first of all, under the 40B guidelines and regulations, as soon as the zoning board gets either an application, or in this case, a request for modification, what they should do is notify the various town boards and departments, who may have concerns about any particular area of interest related to their so-called jurisdiction. And so, in that sense, you're right, in no way, and if I implied it, I apologize, I didn't mean to, you're absolutely right, you can't direct the zoning board, but you can certainly say, we support it, and we're letting it go forward to you, but we have a certain concern about, make sure the impact on the setbacks, because I know that was one of the questions in your letter, that's why I picked it, not arbitrarily, you know, we would hope that even if you had concern, that you'd be satisfied enough that it's worthy, and would, you know, get the project going and get the three additional affordable units to the, for the town's benefit, that you could express to the zoning board that, yes, you support it, but that you would like the ZBA to address the question of setbacks, or the question of the design, things like that. So, that's...
I guess that's, you are telling us to direct them, and I guess, I'm saying that I think we have the power to tell you, before you go to the ZBA, you actually need to make these changes.
Well, you, that's a different, I don't mean to get semantic, and if I'm not being clear, I apologize, but you cannot tell the zoning board to do something. If you are not satisfied that you would like it to leave your domain and go on to the zoning board, where we ultimately have to be, then, you know, yes, we have to satisfy you. If you don't think you should approve it, which is a recommendation to support it and let us go to ZBA, and ultimately, you know, get it built, then, yes, we have to satisfy you, basically. And that's what we're here for.
Good.
Well, the biggest, well, first of all, I want to say, this project has been in the works for quite a while, back to when Cubby was a developer. So, it's been out there for a while. And I realize that from the very beginning, the project only had three affordable units designated for it, as I believe. But we're now five, six, seven years later, and the biggest, one of the biggest needs we have in this town is affordable housing. And what concerns me about the project is that there are still only three affordable units. You know, you're asking us, as the board of selectmen, to take over for Mass Housing, in a sense, and do the work that Mass Housing would do if the project went directly to them. And that means providing town resources and all of that to the project. And frankly, I, with only three affordable housing units, I would not be in favor of this project. I think that there's opportunity to, I mean, you can go up to 80% at least in, with affordable units. And considering where the town is now, I think it would be a greater benefit to the town if there were more affordable units than three.
I can respect that, but number one, there are some resources, because it's your time and your staff in looking at it, but it's not, you know, it's not beyond that, it's just for this review process, and then it's the zoning board. But more importantly, to respond to your point, I understand that there are two, two things, I think, to consider. One, every board that I go to, and I literally have gone to hundreds over the years, and it's a natural response. And on a LIP project, it's not just the zoning board that requests it, it's the selectmen. But it's a financial reality, it's a question of feasibility. And in the time that's gone, that has gone by, construction costs have gone up and all of that, and the prices, you know, for the affordable units have gone up somewhat, but, you know, costs of construction and everything else have really gone up a lot more. So, it becomes purely, you know, a financial feasibility, realistic question. And the question of, you know, is it worth, first, you have to be satisfied that what, you know, we're telling you and what Michael is projecting is reasonable, understood. But if we satisfy you, then you have to, we hope, view it as a situation where if you allow him to go forward, there would be the three units, as opposed to probably none, if it doesn't go forward. And also, on, on the question of the three, you know, it was always, it was always proposed as the three units. And if it's not approved, either by you or the zoning board, the possibility still exists. Obviously, Michael believes it's preferable and better, as well as, for the town, as well as for the financial reasons, to go forward with the unit with the 12, still with three affordables. But if you were to say no, then either Michael, or perhaps somebody else, could go forward with a 10-unit project, which would still be three. And we think that there's, there won't be an additional unit, that's true, and fair point, but we think that the net benefits still, overall, outweigh the fact that there's three units and not more.
But I might say, though, that the market rate of these units is $550,000. And for what we need in this town right now, that's, that's a pretty stiff price for a lot of people. And I don't think it's going to meet the needs that we have. Our needs for affordable housing are much greater than that, and much, and whatever units would be created, I think should be lower than that, if we're gonna really attempt to meet the needs of this community. That's, I mean, we're five or six years along on the project. Back then, sure, we had needs with affordable housing, but now, it's become critical to the community that we have places for people to live. Anyway, I don't want to preach about that.
I'm on that same, same thought, in talking about having the 40B. I also notice in here somewhere, the list of communities that would be eligible for someone to bid on this. There's some papers here, and it goes through Barnstable and Mashpee, and that they would be eligible to come in and bid on a 40B in Falmouth.
I'm not sure what you mean by other towns bidding, are you talking about...
Well, it just says who would be eligible to purchase a 40B in Falmouth.
You're talking about a unit buyer?
Yes.
Well, what, what basically happens is...
Michael, in the existing permit, is there a local preference in there? I actually can't remember. I don't recall there's one.
But if a town, if there's more than one affordable, a town can put in a local preference. It would not guarantee that all units, because the way it works under federal law, and as DHCD applies it, is that a local lottery, in the lottery, a local preference can be established, where up to 70% of the units, which would be basically two out of the three, would be, if there are local applicants in the lottery, would be guaranteed to be local preference. There are certain requirements that DHCD looks at, so I want to be very careful. It usually works out fine. Is there a possibility that, based on the empirical demographics of Falmouth, that DHCD would look at, is there a possibility that they might say, no, you don't qualify for a local preference? Yes, but I haven't seen that happen on the many that I've done in the last several years. So, that would be one way to deal with it. Again, I have to discuss everything with my client, but if that's a concern, you could put in your approval that you want a local preference, as long as, you know, it has to be consistent with the DHCD policies, and you can't get too specific about who qualifies for local preference. It can be, you know, residents of the town and their families, and employees of the town, essentially. So, you know, so that, that is how that is usually dealt with.
In the design of it, and somewhere in one of Mr. Jones's questions, why are the 40Bs on the interior instead of being on the perimeter? Is there a reason that, the style of them, or whatever?
Well, that's actually one of the things that's, that's changing a bit, so Michael can get into all of those.
Okay.
You know, certainly.
All right. And why does it have to be a 40B?
Well, that's just because of the existing zoning, that the density doesn't allow the number of units that were approved and that are being proposed now.
You couldn't do 10 full-price units?
No, no.
You have to have three 40Bs?
Well, yes, you couldn't get the density, it just wouldn't fly. You'd have no vehicle under the local zoning, other than a variance, which would frankly never be granted, you know, to ask for that number of units. And one quick thing, which might be still uneconomic, unfeasible, so what I'm about to say, I haven't spoken with Michael, you know, he can respond, perhaps we could look at it, but, you know, the address that Ms. Flynn just mentioned about really moderate, that's what we would call moderate units, that aren't up to 80% of income, so they don't, they don't count under the 40Bs subsidized housing inventory. But again, that's something I see and hear a lot from towns, that really, there's a need for people who, you know, don't qualify for the so-called up to 80% 40B units, but 550 is more expensive than they can afford, and maybe, you know, a moderate price that might be in between the affordable price. Again, it may be economically unfeasible, so I don't want in any way indicate, oh, sure, we'll do that. But that would be the way that that is sometimes dealt with, can maybe, you know, a moderate unit, you know, one of the markets which would switch not to an affordable, but switch to something in between, would be called a quote-unquote moderate. Again, I want to be clear, that wouldn't count towards your subsidized housing inventory, only the three affordable would count, but it would address the concern that you expressed. So, you know, I think it makes sense for Michael to get into the guts of the development, and I appreciate the questions, and I'll still be here. Thanks.
Mr. Patterson had a question up first.
Well, it's really a kind of, the question that Pat is raising is, how do we generate more affordable units? And we're really quite limited. I mean, we can hope for private developers to come in and try to put together an economically feasible project that has a few affordable units, or we can do something like the Springbys Road, you know. But we don't have a lot of options. And we're somewhat at the mercy of the planning board, and meeting to pass changes in our zoning bylaws in order to permit accessible apartments, but...
With the exception of LIP projects, and that's exactly what LIP projects are for, is giving us some authority to actually push a little bit harder.
Well, you can push it, but, you know, I think the point of it being economically feasible for a private developer is a legitimate point, that we can't just naively assume we can just run over the top of. So, I think we need to listen to Michael's arguments on this, and keep at least a somewhat open mind, even though we know what the objective is. But, I mean, we live, unfortunately, in this free enterprise system right now, and if we're gonna be generating some affordable units, we've got to look at all of our options, and I just want to keep that open.
But remember, if this, being a LIP project, the town has a part to play in this, and it involves dollars. You know, it isn't just, we make a decision and then they go off. The town has to make significant contributions here, because it's a LIP. So, that's what I'm saying. And if we're, and I'm, somebody else is probably in a better position to say what some of the town's contributions are in a LIP, in terms of, maybe, well, resources, let's put it that way. But we're acting in the place of Mass Housing, when, and that's what the LIP is.
I don't think it's any cash that we put forward.
No, not cash, but we provide the services.
Again, I realize that, you know, the way the program, the way the program and the guidelines work, it makes it sound like it's a little bit of both, so I'm not meaning to be, you know, mealy-mouthed or anything like that, I want to be very explicit. Yes, there's some time commitment, both by the board and by staff, but really, there, there isn't to speak of any significant town resources. There's definitely no money, there's no monetary obligation whatsoever. You're, you're, other than reviewing it at this level, you're not really standing in the shoes of either Mass Housing or any other subsidizing agency, because the subsidizing agency is DHCD. They still have to look at it. They already started that process by approving the transfer, and by approving under the 40B regulations, the procedural aspect of proposing the changes, and then reviewing them at the so-called final approval stage, doesn't mean we don't need this from you. But just so you know, that was something else, the state agency still is involved in the ultimate overview, not overview, the ultimate supervision of all the documentation and what have you, although you would get to sign, I forgot to say that, you would get to sign and therefore review, it has to be pretty much the standard, but I haven't had towns have problems with it. You would sign the regulatory agreement, and, you know, you would get copies of all of the cost certification things and what have you, all of which have to be done by DHCD. So, you know, just wanted to explain that with a few examples.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, well, I mean, because this is gonna go back to Heather and Julie. I mean, if this were a private development, no affordable units whatsoever, would it be any less onerous on the town to go through the whole review and permitting process?
It would not come through our office, through the administration's office.
This is a question through you.
It wouldn't come through, it wouldn't be coming to us, and it wouldn't actually come to the town manager's office.
We're volunteers.
They're not, and they've already spent about 40 hours dealing with this project. And that costs money. And that's something that they could be doing, you know, because we are taking it on as a project that we are putting our stamp of approval on. And that's not, this is one of the first ones we've done, that the board of selectmen has done it, and that's, you know, we're taking it very, they've taken it very seriously. Frank's looked at the documents, Pat's looked at the documents, and, you know, Brian's looked at, I mean, it's many different boards and offices that have been looking at this and putting time, which is money, into this project, that we wouldn't have to if it weren't a LIP.
If I understand this process correctly, there are three signatures on the application of a LIP, the developer, the local housing partnership, and either the chairman of the board of selectmen, or the dozen of the board. So, this really is the town's application to the zoning board of appeals, along with the developer. So, it is a very unique process. It's designed to make the process more streamlined, I know that's hard to think about in this particular case, but when Mr. Gummell came to the town, it took him a very short period of time to meet with the local housing partnership, with the board of selectmen, did not need to see Mass Housing, did not have to subject themselves to a multi-layered review process with their financial team, with their development team, they weren't subject to a site visit by Mass Housing, by a referral to the town, a 90-day referral process. None of that occurred when Mr. Gummell received his first approved local initiative project, which was the 10-unit project. So, that's what the LIP program is there for. It really is for special projects that need to afford a streamlined permit process, that provide the town with some community benefit, and this town has always looked at that as more affordable units than a conventional 40B would allow. And so, that, that really is the framework, that you're taking a look at that, and it's as much this project and the future projects that may come. Are, what are the guidelines for adopting local initiative projects? Are they projects that are, meet the convention for a conventional 40B? And that, that's your, your call. Or do they have some additional benefit? The other feature I know from the regulations, which are cumbersome, and I must say, I'm not all that familiar with, but there are some additional requirements related to the monitoring, which we can ask the developer to take on, but they do maintain that obligation with the town in terms of the ongoing monitoring of these units. And I can tell you, that's several hours a week, in terms of the number of units that we have in town.
So, we are the monitoring agent for this?
We are not the monitoring agent, but we have responsibilities relative to monitoring.
I, you know, I don't want to get into any nitpicking because all the points are well-taken and I generally agree with that. But on that last point in particular, I actually just went through it with a ton of brewster. You're correct, you're not the monitoring agent other than having the right to get documents because you're a signatory to the regulatory agreement. And you can ask to insert more involvement if you want, but DHCD and the developer with a lottery agent alone take care of reviewing the eligibility of the applicants and the monitoring of all of the eligibility requirements so the town doesn't actually get burdened with more staff time.
That, Mr. Chairman?
Do the deeds stay affordable in perpetuity? And who monitors that?
That is monitored by DHCD. And if, they don't have a separate monitoring agent. There are requirements that sales in the process, that the town gets copies, which is the same with or without LIP. But what, there are two things. In the old days, there was concern because, believe it or not, the agencies allowed, if there was a foreclosure, that the restrictions could be wiped out. That's history, you don't have to worry about that. The second thing is, the new, so-called new deed rider deals with a situation where if a buyer of the affordable unit wants to sell their unit, there's ninety to one hundred and twenty day review period, which always involves the town, who either, if they want, has a right of first refusal but can aid in finding an eligible buyer at whatever time it is. And so, usually, the eligible buyer is found and the unit continues and a new deed rider is recorded and it goes on and on in perpetuity. There is one, just to be crystal clear, and I know it's complex, but good questions, so it still would be subject to a deed rider in perpetuity. In the situation where after, I think it's a hundred and twenty days or it might be ninety, if with all the efforts of the agencies and the town and affordable housing committees and the buyers, if an affordable, if an eligible affordable buyer cannot be found, they're not going to burden some owner with not being able to sell their unit. The unit could still then be sold. It would still be sold at whatever the affordable price is at the time and it would still be subject to a new deed rider being signed by the new owner, but somebody who earns more than the eighty percent income limit would be eligible to buy it. And that's just out of fairness to a homeowner who otherwise could be really hamstrung. Hasn't happened much, has it happened sometimes? Yes, it has happened, not much, but it could happen. So, I just want to be very careful when I say, "Yes, it's in perpetuity." It is, but there's one circumstance where it might be for some period of time owned by somebody who earned more money, but they'd have to agree to the limit on the sales price in the future ad infinitum.
Well, my experience with DHCD on that particular issue is not the same at all. In fact, we bumped into a little bit of pressure when we asked a developer of a LIP project to take on the responsibility of monitoring. DHC told us we were unable to exert that pressure, although the developer agreed to do that at the end of the day. So, I have a little different experience than that. I also have the experience that DHCD doesn't have the staff to support that. This is three units, this is not going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back, so I don't want to make that more of an issue than it is. But it is an additional responsibility that comes with taking on these projects.
We should really let Michael make his presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening, thanks, Mr. Chairman, Michael Galasso, 200 Palmer Avenue, member of the McGanser Crossing LLC. Let me go back before I go to the slides, just a little bit of quick history on this project and how I got involved and TRI got involved in this project. It was brought to us as an opportunity of a forty B. We're in the business of developing affordable housing. That's what we do, as many of you know. And I'm going to show you an example of some of the things that we've done, not only here, but also projects that I've done when I was out in California. So, once we acquired it, you know, no one's going to acquire a piece of property, has permits, without having the permits transferred. So, the first thing we did, we went to the ZBA, we got the comprehensive permit that was approved for the ten units assigned to us, and that was approved by the ZBA. The next thing that we did is we looked at whether or not we could change this project to a rental project, knowing that there was a need for rental projects. And what we found out was that the gap, the amount of money we were going to need from subsidizing agencies, the town, the state, federal, was so big, for a small project, it probably wasn't going to occur. If it was, it was going to take many, many years. So, at that time, actually, Heather asked the planning director whether or not we needed to convey the LIP committee at that time for the project and bring it to the, bring the transfer to the selectman. And he decided at that time it wasn't necessary. They're actually going to call the LIP committee together and they decided not to have the LIP committee meet. So, we would have been through this process back in 2013. It would have still been a ten-unit project, but we would have been through this process of transferring it completely from Cubby Construction to McGanser Crossing. So, we decided that we wanted to improve this project. We wanted to take an existing LIP project that had already been approved by the town, that was ten units, and see whether we can make it into a better project. I don't think the town or the neighbors would have been, even though Mr. Gummel's a very great contractor and everything, no prior experience in affordable housing, but I don't think that it would have been a project at the end of the day that we all would have thought was a great project. What we're trying to do here is turn this project into what we think will be a good example of not only LIP projects, but other projects that we do throughout the town. So, what I'd like to do is take you through the changes that we're proposing. And there is a process, as Mr. Freeman has explained, for modifications to existing forty B projects. It's in the regulations. And when we bring the modifications forward, the ZBA has to determine, are these modifications large enough that we have to go out and have a public hearing or can they be administratively changed? Most likely, when we're adding units, it's probably going to be a process where we'll have to go out and have a public hearing for people to discuss and be notified about the changes. But that's in the regulations. So, if you're not familiar where the site is, let me start by orientating you. So, up is north, North Falmouth Highway. It's the three parcels outlined there. Just to the south is the new Cape Cod Cooperative Bank that was built on the site, on the site just to the south. And then there's the next building down is the post office building with Duncan Donut. And a little bit further down is 151. What's interesting is the little triangle parcel just to the left of 702 is town-owned. It's a piece of town-owned property. Now, in my experience, unless we really have a real good use for that or it's de-restricted, we don't see, it might have been a good use to look at if you wanted to get more affordable housing, including that parcel in the project. So, a LIP process is you're partnering with a developer. So, you're partnering, the town is partnering with a developer. And there's been a lot of discussion and questions about who's, who's Michael Galasso, what has he done before in TRI? And usually, this is one thing I don't like to talk about, which is things that I've done in the past. But I think it's important now to go over some of those things, so you get an idea. I did grow up in Falmouth. I went to San Diego for a number of years, formed a development company out there that specialized in affordable housing. So, I just want to quickly show you some of the projects that we did out there. We did a lot of work in the little Italy neighborhood of downtown San Diego. This is our building that we built. It's the gray building just behind the sign. It's an eighty-room, single-room, occupancy, now they're called microunit project. With, on the ground floor is our cafe, Cafe Italia. Some of you've had some coffee from Cafe Italia over the years. That's the cafe that's run by my brother, Steve Galasso. This is another shot of that.